Thanks so much. I'm now going to call this public hearing of Tuesday, March 9th. The order, council, over the purpose to confirm me of quorum, please ensure your video is turned on. And I know that many councillors do this, but I think it's it's just fair that everybody try to be on video. And I'll be doing periodic roll calls for the evening, just to make sure that you are on video. Just so we can make sure that we abide by this quasi judicial hearing and the quorum that's necessary. We're convening these electronic means under the order of the Public Safety Minister, Order Number M192. And if we lose connections through the night, we'll recess the meeting until the connection is restored. If you are going to leave the meeting, please let the clerk know if you're leaving and same as if you if you return. The live stream of this meeting will have both audio and video, video of council members speaking, presentations, amendment and vote results would projected to viewers been available. Members, the public can also listen to proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link, which will be tweeted out at Van City Clerk on Twitter. Right. Lastly, followed above, the updated guidance issued on February 10th, in-person participation for local government meetings and public hearings is not permitted under the provincial health order. And so therefore speakers will be providing comments to council by phone and a moderator will assist. Clerks, can I have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Stewart in the chair, councillor Carr.
Here.
Councillor De Genova.
Present.
Councillor Frye.
Here.
Councillor Swanson.
Here.
Councillor Hardwick.
Present.
Councillor Weeb.
Present.
Councillor Boyle.
Present.
Councillor Dominado.
Present.
Councillor Bly is on civic business this evening and has a leave of absence. And councillor Kirby Young, councillor Kirby Young indicated she'd be about 10 minutes late. The meeting has quorum.
Thanks. Thanks, clerks. I was just going to ask councillor Hardwick and councillor De Genova if they intend to join us by video this evening?
I certainly do. I wasn't aware that it had. Holtergeist.
Okay, there you go. Thank you, councillor De Genova. Sure, councillor De Genova.
I will, as soon as I, due to pandemic and bubble restrictions, I have limited childcare options in the evening. So as soon as I have my child in bed, I will, but I did want to state for the record and thank you for giving me the opportunity to do so. That not only am I listening, but I also on my other device and watching the presentation via the live stream.
Yeah, just for quorum purposes, it's good that if you are on video as often as possible, so I'll check in a little later this evening.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you. We acknowledge that we're on the traditional and unceded territories of the Musqueam, Squamish and Tsleil-Waututh nations and want to thank them for their generosity to all who live on these lands. And want to thank staff for all their work, especially during COVID-19. It's been grueling, but there's light at the end of the tunnel here, which I think everybody's happy about. But just wanted to thank staff for everything that they do. Speakers will have a five minutes to make their comments this evening and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or oppose the recommendations and if they are a resident of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on Twitter at Van City Clerk for updates on the progress of the meeting, so they don't miss their turn to speak. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted or writing to our online web form at vancouver.ca/public-hearingcomments. And that link is on Twitter. Speakers who pre-registered with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight delay. To navigate through the slides for the presentation, please say next. Also, I want to note that the city of Vancouver's longstanding commitment to equity, diversity and inclusion, including utmost respect for all genders. I remember, I remind council that when addressing speakers and staff, we will avoid using gendered honorifics and will instead refer to the person by last name, by first and last name or role or title. For example, Mr. Mayor becomes mayor. A reminder that a council's role at a public hearing is to be quasi judicial body, which means that council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, but should save debate for after the close of speakers. After hearing from speakers, council may, one, approve in principle the application, two, refuse the application, or three, defer the application for further consideration. So the first item up is rezoning on 183 West King Edward Avenue and 4088 Columbia Street. Does anybody wish to declare a conflict of interest? Okay, thanks so much. We'll get the clerk now read the application and summary of correspondence.
There is an application by form development to be zone 183 West King Edward Avenue and 4088 Columbia Street from single detached house and duplexes district to multiple dwelling district to permit a townhouse development with a floor space ratio of up to 1.2. If rezonings approved, a subsequent development permit process will entail review of a proposed form of development. No correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receive the public comments till 5:00 PM today.
Okay, great. Thanks. If there are speakers who wish to speak to this item, please call 1-833-353-8610, participant code 42339, hashtag to get on the list. And the number is on the live stream and is tweeted out. We do have one speaker according to the clerks who's on the line. So I'll ask Austin Norrie from the rezoning centre to go through the through the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I'm the rezoning planner for this item. Can you hear me and see my screen?
Sure can.
Great. So before you this evening is a townhouse rezoning application under the Canby corridor plan and is an application under a simplified rezoning process. This simplified process was developed in order to secure utility upgrades to accommodate additional growth within the Canby corridor. Since this proposal is to rezone the site to the RM8AN district schedule, no form of development is required at the rezoning stage. However, public feedback for the proposed form of development will occur during the development permit phase. This simplified rezoning process allows a reduced processing time for rezoning applications, so they can reach public hearing in approximately four to six months. The rezoning application for this townhouse is located in the Canby village area of the Canby corridor plan. The proposal is for stacked townhouses or row houses up to three stories with a maximum floor space ratio of 1.2. The site consists of two single family detached homes located at the corner of West King Edward Avenue and Columbia Street. The properties are located two blocks east of the King Edward Canada Line subway station. These single family homes are each currently occupied by two different rental tenants and both tenants qualify under the tenant relocation and protection policy. A needs assessment has been conducted to determine which benefits would be applied for each tenant. A tenant relocation plan will be required from the applicant at the time of development permit application. A total of approximately 939 postal notifications were distributed within a two block radius of the site location. Seven pieces of correspondence or feedback were received through the city's Shave Your City webpage. Feedback included that the proposal's messaging should respect the views and privacy of neighboring properties. Setbacks are desired from the alleyway, that the replacement housing wouldn't necessarily be affordable and that new density could create traffic congestion and road safety concerns. Considering the feedback on the proposal's form of development, it will inform development planning staff during the review of the proposal's development permit application. To conclude, this proposal aligns with the Canby corridor plan and would join one of approximately 35 townhouse projects that have been approved since the plan's adoption since 2018. If approved, the project will provide roughly $500,000 in public benefits and would be responsible for generating approximately 50 consultant construction or supplier based jobs. Staff recommend approval of this application, along with the conditions of approval outlined in Appendix B of the referral report. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Great. Thanks so much for your presentation. Sorry, council, just pulling up my script here. Right, so I'll ask if there are any questions from council to staff. I don't see anybody on the question queue. So is the applicant team here to speak the application?
Yes, we're here.
Great. Did you want to speak? I know that you have no presentation or just answer questions?
Answer questions if there's any.
Great. Any questions from council to staff or applicants? I don't see anybody on the queue, so we're going to move to hear from the public. If there are any other speakers, any speakers who want to speak to this item? 1-833-353-8610, code 42339 pound to get on the list. And we do have one speaker who is on the line and just checking here, it is, I have. Let's just make sure I have the right list here. I have Lindsay Roy.
Yep, I'm here.
Great. You have up to five minutes to address council. Please go ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay. Hi, I'm a resident at 4088 Columbia. I've been here, living here for three years, three and a half. And I wanted to just bring up the kind of what the other side of this application is, that there'd be a lot of people that are being displaced and are also in limbo during the time we're living in these houses that are basically purchased as an investment for development and not as homes for people who need them in the city where we live. It's been a real trial to have health and safety needs met in this house. Often that's not something that the person who is buying or owning the property is at all invested in. And it's been immensely consuming to just try and get things like basic mold, heating issues and other, you know, very urgent things addressed when when they come up, often taking up months for things like a furnace to be fixed. We had two months without a furnace last year. So I wanted to just bring up to council that although there is some protection for tenants, it all comes after the facts. And during this waiting period, holding period and application process, there is no kind of accountability for what our experience like is going to be like with the person that's, you know, sitting and telling you all the nice things that they're doing for tenants and how notices have been received, but yet they haven't communicated at all in reality about what the plan is or any relocation information or any sort of sharing on a human level even about, you know, the fact that we are losing our home in the next six months and have no certainty as to where we should find another one. As the new housing that's being developed does not at all meet my needs or the needs of my family. I just hope that you can think about, you know, what you use your home for and how you feel about your home. And, you know, we were handed the information about relocation at the same time as a 10 day eviction notice because we were a day late paying rent due to COVID, a family emergency prevented someone from being able to pay, but we had paid the next day and had given our landlord that information five days prior that there would be a delay in our full rent payment. So, you know, it doesn't really give me much certainty or safety to be handed an eviction notice at the same time as a piece of paper saying all the things that I'm supposed to be entitled to from the person who's just trying to boot me out. That's probably my time, so thank you for hearing me and I hope that you keep in mind that that this is where I lay my head and my safe space. And there isn't another one in my scope right now, so please keep that in mind as you're reviewing the application.
Thank you. Councillor Swanson has questions for you. Councillor Swanson, up to five minutes.
Yeah, you don't have to answer this if you don't want, but do you mind if I ask how much rent you're paying and for how much space?
No, I don't mind. It's $4,000 a month plus it's a 1942 house, so we have up to $1,500 of bills in addition to that in the winter with heating costs. And that would be for four bedroom, technically speaking.
So do you have a family?
I'm not sure of the square footage. Yeah, we're a family unit that's sharing, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's some, there's people with diverse needs in our houses, in our house as well. So I've really tried to create a space where my family can have, you know, the needs, their needs met as well as like accessibility to transit and good community connections. I grew up in this, I was born in Adoaks Co-op down the road and so this is my my neighbourhood. Yeah, and it's been really hard to see it. I watched two houses be torn down over the last two days across the street from me and they were, you know, sitting empty for quite some time and it's all happening very, very fast.
So one of the big problems with our. One of the big problems with our tenant protection plan is it gives you a little bit of money when you have to leave, but it doesn't guarantee that you get another place that you, in your neighbourhood, or another place that you can afford. So I'm hoping that our staff is going to come back with recommendations as to how we can do that. But unfortunately, I don't think they're going to be in time to help you. So really sorry about that.
Yeah, I mean, I find it a little bit tricky to, it sounds like there's people that are in the role of planning for the city and the citizens are not actually able to do that, which is concerning to me when the developer has no investment in providing housing for people with disabilities and low income. So I hope that the city councillors are using the power that they do have to make sure that that's part of the plan.
Yeah. Okay, thank you so much for speaking.
Thank you. Councillor Hardwick, questions to the speaker?
Thank you very much. How long have you lived in this house?
I moved in October 2017, so three and a half years-ish.
Okay, but you grew up in the neighbourhood and you.
This is the second owner.
Sorry, yes, I did grow up in the neighbourhood. You mentioned that you grew up in the neighbourhood and, you know, if you've been living there over, you've seen some big changes.
Yes.
You've watched, you've watched in the last couple of days, some more houses coming down. Can you describe in your own words? Well, first of all, going into that neighbourhood, you had to know that there was going to be change. But can you talk about some of the change that you've seen apart from the most recent? Is, has the, has it accelerated from your standpoint?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, it's a lightning speed. I mean, we've basically wa, I've watched every house from, from the Skytrain station to me get torn down one at a time and often four or five at a time. Today, there was two, one being finished off and the other one that came down. One was only about maybe 10 years old, I think. Beautiful house. Wasteful is the one thing. There's nothing being salvaged. There's nothing being recycled. It's just all thrown away, taken down and thrown away. And those could be tiny homes for people to live in if they were repurposed. And sure, maybe moved elsewhere, but it's all good materials. I just see this huge wastefulness in that kind of demolishing and and the vacant houses. They've been sitting vacant for at least nine months.
Yeah, that was my next question. That was part of my question of the houses that you've been watching coming down in succession. Have they been occupied, unoccupied? What does that look like?
They're mostly unoccupied and it's probably because of how hard it is to live in one of these properties when the person who's developing it is not actually a landlord in the sense that they're, you know, being responsible in that role. And, you know, when the furnace breaks and you don't get it fixed, people leave. Also, it's, you know, nothing's been maintained and there's other issues going on with people squatting in the empty houses nearby. There's been an increase in like garage break-ins, like theft, break-ins in cars because those houses, as they sit vacant, obviously there's people that are in need of a shelter and so they will make use of them.
Do you get a sense that there's anybody's? Well, it describes what's what's been going down, but is is there anybody sticking it out? Do you see any houses that are and people, families that are managing to stay in the neighbourhood or is it basically dominoes?
I mean, I'm here. It's dominoes. The older couple that was in one of the houses that was taken down today were settled in. I'm pretty sure they'd custom built their house and I have no idea why they moved. They were out very quickly and hardly took anything with them, which is odd. And other house was beautiful and I don't know why they would leave it. I'm guessing they had a large sum of money or a threat. I don't know, because they seem very, very happy to be retired there and had recently just retired. Yeah, I mean, as far as the renter goes, like I've stuck it out for three and a half years. My neighbour who had the same landlord and is part of this application as well. We've been through now two owners who are challenging to work with. And we're sticking it out as our, you know, our family unit because we love our neighbourhood and also we feel we should be able to exist and live in Vancouver as citizens who, you know, just have the same needs as anyone else.
Well, thank you very much for giving council some idea of what this policy, the effect that it's having on the neighbourhood. It's important to hear up close and personal. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for questions. Wanted to thank you so much for calling in this evening. Council, we have no other registered speakers on this item. So I'm going to call the first time for additional speakers. It's 1-833-353-8610, code 42339 pound to get on the list. And I'm going to check with the clerks on this first call. Is there anybody else on the line?
Yes, Mayor Stewart, the clerk here and just checking, no, we have nobody else on the line for this item.
Okay, I'll make the second call, 1-833-353-8610, code 42339 pound. That's on Twitter and the live stream. And this is the second call and I just go back to you clerks before I do my third call. Anybody join?
No one has joined, Mayor Stewart.
Thanks. Third call then. Number is on the live stream and Twitter, as is the participant code. And it is 6:22. Council will come back at 6:27 to check if there's any more participants and then move on to debate and decision. Okay, council, we'll see you at 6:27. Going to check with the clerks to see if there's anyone else in the line for to speak to this item.
Mayor Stewart, there is no one further on the line for this item.
That is great. Okay. Hello?
Sorry?
Yeah. Oh, you said there, there is one person?
No, there is no one.
Sorry, I thought you said, that's why I said hello. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so we're going to close the speakers list, council. And as we've received no, fewer no public comments after 5:00 PM, we're going to close the receipt of public comments and move on to the applicant. Applicant have any closing comments?
No comments, Mayor.
Thanks very much. Staff have, staff have any closing comments?
No comments. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Council have any additional questions for staff? Okay, I don't see any. Do you have a mover for the recommendation?
Mayor, I do have one question for staff. Sorry for my delay in getting on the list. I'm just hoping to hear from staff to to the concerns about the tenant relocation plan that we heard from the speaker, just hoping, just wondering if staff have any information on on the timelines on that or enforcement of it or or how they check in with developments to make sure that the policy is being applied.
Over to staff.
Thank you for your question, councillor. This would be a great question for our housing staff. They are on the line. They could speak to that.
Okay, housing staff? Do we have housing staff on the line? Anybody over at the staff side?
Yes, hi there. Our council, can you hear me? This is Thor Coleman from Housing.
Yes, I can hear you.
I, it's actually the lead on this is Eileen Tavakoli, but my colleague, but she just told me that she's having troubles with sound, so I'll speak to it.
Okay.
So I believe your question was around the timing of. So I believe your question was around the timing of the tenant relocation plan for this. But we have already received a tenant relocation plan from the applicant. And I believe it has already been approved. Um, that is a, will be a requirement of this project if, if you do choose to approve it. Then, uh, after rezoning, uh, if approved, we would require from the applicant a, an interim report to let us know how it's going, uh, as we get closer to development permit. Uh, and then ultimately, uh, as tenants, uh, once permits have been issued and tenants are lawfully evicted, then, um, the, uh, tenants would be moving on and receive assistance as per the, the plan that has been, uh, has been approved. And then finally, at the end, prior to occupancy of the project, we require a final tenant relocation plan from the applicant to indicate how they assisted those tenants and where they ended up.
Okay, appreciate that information. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Uh, councillor, we have questions too?
Yeah, I just have one question. Um, in the public benefit strategy, it talks about a $500,000 value package, but looking at the fact that we've increased the neighborhood by 12.8%, yet have delivered only about 3% of the amenities. I'm just wondering, um, how can we correlate the lack of public amenities achieved with the current, um, project?
Hi, counsel. It's Cynthia Lowry zoning center. Um, so our public benefits are throughout the entire Canby corridor project. And these applications as part of the townhouse process are, um, do not contribute community amenity contributions, but instead do, um, DCLs through citywide utilities and density bonus zones. But as staff have evaluated the entire Canby corridor area through our public benefit strategy, we expect that the delivery of public benefits will be appropriate, um, with the timing of development.
Do we not use DCLs to provide public benedity, public amenities?
Yes, we do. And they're also as part of the, um, capital planning process.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Okay, that's it for, uh, questions from counsel. And so do we have somebody to move, uh, this recommendation?
So move councillor Kirbyon.
Thanks, Secunder.
Second councillor.
Thank you councillor Carr. I'm just going to go to the debate queue now. Um, sorry councillor Hardwick, I think you're on the other queue, so I switched queues now. If you want to speak, uh, please go ahead. Yep, councillor Hardwick, up to five minutes, uh, for debate.
Great. Thank you very much. Well, um, this is a boilerplate rezoning RS1 to RM, uh, eight A and stacked townhouses, fronting street, three stories. Um, everything is compliant, FSR two lot, uh, 1.2 FSR, two lot assembly, half a million, it did say in there for DCLs, I thought DCLs and CACs. So it, it is boilerplate, but again, what it is very illustrative of is, uh, you know, what, what was intentionally brought, brought about with the Canby corridor. And I just, uh, wanted to reflect for a minute on what we've seen in, uh, the property assessment rolls over the last number of years and the exponential inflation that the city has experienced. And also, um, what we've seen with, as we look forward with our, our planning of the city, uh, which seems to be, uh, dominated by housing production. And I, uh, you know, this is boilerplate. There's nothing that, that is offside about it. Um, it complies with the policy. I just still want to reflect back on the policy itself, even though, Mr. Mayor, I, sorry, mayor. Um, I acknowledge, uh, that this is not to be a policy discussion. But every, every decision that we make based on flawed policy is a flawed decision. So I, I do encourage us to be having some, this is a new council. We continue to deliver on policies that we inherited, but, um, I am hopeful that we will be revisiting them. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else on the queue, so I will call a vote on this, uh, item. Yes, councillor Dejanova?
Thanks, Mayor Stewart. Could I please have a vote assist in favor?
Will do. Okay, counsel, that has passed with none in opposition. Thanks. And now we're going to move on to item number two. Uh, we have rezoning on, uh, 4138 Canby Street. Does any member of council wish to declare conflict of interest on this one? Okay, uh, if anybody would like to speak to this from the public, 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 42339 hashtag. And I'll get the clerk now to read the application and summary correspondence.
This is an application by Penny Forring Hillcrest Development Limited to rezone 4118 to 4138 Canby Street from residential district to comprehensive development district. To permit the development of a six-story residential building containing 90 secured market rental units, a height of 22 meters with additional height for rooftop amenity space and a floor space ratio of 2.94 are proposed. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receipt of public comments. One piece of correspondence in support, one piece correspondence in opposition, and one piece of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Thanks so much. Uh, we do have a speaker at council, so we'll move to the presentation. We have Alicia Dejarle, uh, from, uh, the rezoning center. And, uh, who I hope will walk us through the, uh, presentation.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, mayor and council. Can you see my screen and, uh, hear my voice?
Yes, we can. And just waiting to check. It is up on the public screen too, so we're good to go.
Great, thanks. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Alicia Dejarle, rezoning planner for this application at 4118 to 4138 Canby Street. This site is located in, uh, sorry, this site is zoned RS1 and located in the Queen Elizabeth neighborhood at the corner of West King Edward Avenue and Canby Street, as shown as red on the map. King Edward Canada Line Station and a small commercial hub is located on the north side of the street. A cluster of four and six-story residential developments, zone CD1, form the blocks surrounding this intersection. The blocks off the arterials and away from the intersection may be rezoned to RM 8A and 8A and townhouses. There are two houses on site with one occupied rental unit. As the application involves a single RS1 lot, the tenant relocation and protection policy does not apply. Across the lane to the east, uh, of the subject site is a six-story seniors home. This site, this area has local shopping, easy access to the Canada Line, and the number 25 bus line along King Edward Avenue, as well as nearby parks. Queen Elizabeth and Hillcrest Park are located approximately 700 meters to the southeast. Braymar Park is located 800 meters to the west. And Douglas Park is located 700 meters to the northwest. The site is located within the catchment of General Wolfe Elementary School, approximately 700 meters east, which has an operating capacity of 364 students. Eric Camber Secondary School is 1.5 kilometers southwest of the site and has a capacity of 1,600 students. There are eight licensed daycare facilities within a 12-minute walking distance from the site, four of which are visible on this map. This site is within the Canby Quarter Plan area, which is approved by council in May 2018. It focuses on providing a range of housing types and affordability levels, including, including the market rental development, such as the project before you tonight. At this location under the plan, rezonings for residential buildings can be considered up to six stories with a density of up to 2.25 FSR. Higher densities may be considered if supported by good urban design performance and public ground performance. A half-story is permitted for shared indoor and outdoor amenity space. Stories above the third floor are stepped back to minimize visual impact. This proposal was received in August 4th, 2020 and proposes a six-story residential building with 90 secured market rental units over two levels of underground parking. An FSR of 2.94 is proposed. A height of 22 meters or 72 feet are proposed for the residential floors. And including the rooftop amenity, the maximum building height would be 25 meters or 82 feet. A previous application for 66 strata units was approved in principle at public hearing on March 12th, 2019. The applicant subsequently chose not to proceed with enacting the rezoning and instead withdrew the application. The current application is for 90 secured market rental units and was received in August 2020. And it supersedes the previous application and this requires a new report and public hearing. The density and height have not changed from what was presented in the 2019 referral report. And note that the previous application did not include a rooftop amenity. Staff have added a provision to bring it into alignment with the current exemptions in the CD1 bylaw so that it may be added at the development permit stage. As a part of Restart Smart Vancouver initiated in response to COVID-19, this project will contribute approximately 315 new onsite and offsite construction jobs during the initiative's recovery phase. This project will meet the minimum requirement of 35% family-sized units under the city's family room housing mix policy for rezoning projects. The application proposes a net increase of 24 units. The utility's DCL waiver was not requested for this project. Staff reviewed preliminary drawings of the reconfigured units and they were evaluated against the form of development conditions of the prior application to, to ensure that they were achievable. This blue column shows the unit mix and percentage breakdown. The average market rents for newer buildings on the west side is shown in the green column along with the average household income needed. The red column shows the cost of homeownership on the west side. If approved, all units would be secured through a housing agreement, which would, which would prohibit the stratification and separate sale of individual apartments for the life of the building or 60 years, whichever is greater. Postcards were distributed to the neighboring, neighboring area around September 21st, 2020. And as the form of development had not significantly changed from the previous application, a virtual open house was not held, but common forms and content, contact information was available through the Shape Your City website. Staff received a total of seven submissions in response to this application. Feedback included support for the creation of new rental. And concerns were about the amount of underground parking provided, the proportion of family-sized units, and the building not contributing to the lack, to the neighborhood and the lack of retail. Staff note that the application does comply with the parking bylaw and that the building is consistent with the plant's build form guidelines, with a more detailed architectural review occurring at the DP stage. This application would contribute 90 secured market rental units to the city's rental housing targets set out in Housing Vancouver Strategy. Thirty-two of these units are family-sized, located directly adjacent to two frequent transit routes. Note that the previous application had offered a CAC contribution of 3.4 million. Rezonings for routine, lower-density, secured market rental that complies with the city's rental policies are exempt from CAC contributions under the policy. Due to the reapplication for rental, this application will now be exempt. In addition, the applicant will be required to pay approximately 1.83 million in DCLs. This includes the utility's DCLs, which help pay for infrastructure upgrades. In conclusion, this proposal meets the intent of the Canby Quarter Plan. I recommend the application be approved, subject to conditions in appendix B of the report. Thank you, mayor and council. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks so much. Any questions for staff at this point? Councillor Swanson, up to five minutes.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for the applicant.
And, uh, we haven't had yet, so we go questions to staff first, then we hear from the applicant, then we go to questions to staff, the applicant. So did you want to hold on?
Okay, I'll hold off then.
Thanks, uh, councillor Hardwick.
Similarly, my questions are for the applicant.
Okay, great. So let's hear from the applicant now. Do we have, uh, applicant team here?
The applicant is present here, yes.
Great. Would you like to say anything or just respond to the questions?
Respond to questions.
Thanks so much. Okay, so let's, uh, let's do this again, councillor, uh, Swanson and Hardwick. Uh, councillor Swanson, up to, uh, five minutes, either the applicant or the, or staff at this point.
Okay, to the applicant, is this going to be a pet-friendly building?
Yes, yes, it will be a pet-friendly building.
Okay, great. And then the other thing is, are you, um, planning on getting any kind of federal government funding for it? Or financing?
We are reviewing all options of financing at, at this time, yes.
So you may, but you may not?
Uh, yes, it's, it's too early to say, but we may or we may not, uh, apply for, for set government funding.
Um, because if you did get federal government funding, would there be affordability requirements?
I believe one of the requirements, um, as part of those, uh, government funding policies is, uh, some affordability requirements, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Hardwick, up to five.
Thank you. So, um, I just, help me understand this. Um, you had an application in for 66 strata units. And, uh, then you shifted to 90 market rental units instead, uh, with an overall increase of, of 20% on, on the site. Is it more lucrative for you to produce market rental housing than, uh, strata condos in today's market?
We shifted the project from a strata configuration to the rental configuration, uh, given its proximity to the transit, uh, Skytrain location across the street. It's all that.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not what I asked you. I asked really about what is more lucrative as, as a, as a, a building. I mean, you're in the, in the, uh, housing business, you're producing a product. There's different paradigms that you're, you're working between. And so what I'm asking you very clearly is it was more, is it more lucrative for you to produce, uh, 90 market rental units than 66 strata units?
Each, each configuration has its merits on, on, uh, the product offering. Uh, in this case, the, the rental project, um, we found was, was, um, a better offering for this specific location, um, given, uh, given its proximity as well as, um, as well as the unit mix we can provide under the rental policy.
Yeah, but at the end of the day, you're in the business of producing housing and so you're going to make the best deal that you can. So, um, under, um, this, I understand there's a DCL payment, that you, but you may ask for a waiver at, at the development permit stage. Is that something that you've taken into consideration in your evaluating this model?
Yes, that is something we take into consideration.
And the waiver presumably a full CAC waiver, um. Okay, so I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my head around the pro forma and, uh, understand what, what, um, you know, the motivation is here. And that does answer my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions for you, so thanks so much. Um, uh, we do have, uh, one speaker, uh, who signed up to speak to this. And it's, uh, Monique, uh, Shaptyak. Shap, Shaptyak.
Choptuick, yes.
Oh, Shaptyuck, I was close. Sorry, my apologies.
Yeah, it's okay. Nobody gets it right.
Try having Kennedy Stewart his name. Yeah. Up to five, up to five minutes, please.
Okay. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Monique Choptuick. I am opposed to this application and I'm also a resident of Vancouver. Historically, developments for builders have been a risky proposition. They didn't know whether, whether they would, um, lose money or make a profit. I believe that what is happening here is that the developer felt that he would not get a reasonable profit building the previously proposed strata units. And has changed the structure of the building and the increased the number of units to generate higher profits on this property. I am opposed to this application for the following three reasons. Reason number one, there should, there should be a completely new rezoning application, not just a new public hearing. Although this uses the same footprint as a previous approved rezoning application, it is constructed completely differently, changing from concrete to a wood frame building. Secondly, the layout and configuration of the building has been changed from 66 strata units to 90 secured market units. These are not just minor changes to a building. Reason number two, is this the right type of rental housing? I believe that in this rental crisis, we are past the point of just building rental stock. We must begin to build targeted rental for what we need now. We've already experienced in the neighborhood, in the strata market, much-needed condos built that were not affordable. The city knew this and announced that it would start building the right type of housing by building townhouses the size of condos. Will the same thing happen to our rental market? Vancouver is starting to experience a paradigm shift. Families are starting to choose to rent long-term rather than buy a condo townhouse. Families are starting to choose to rent long-term rather than buy a condo, townhouse, or house due to high home prices. Although the city designates a two-bedroom unit as suitable for families, in reality, due in part to the COVID pandemic, families are now saying that they need more space. In the previous strata application, there were 14 three-bedroom units. Under this rental redevelopment, there are no three-bedroom units. The Queen Elizabeth area is considered a prime family residential area. We need to start building more real family rental units. We need to start to also make larger rental units. Recently, I heard an architect say that the Olympic Village can be considered innovative architecture because the social housing was blended into development, and you couldn't see the difference. Wouldn't it be really innovative if we could build rental units the same size as strata units? Renters should not be treated as second-class citizens. For example, in each case, whether they are studio, one or two-bedroom, these units are smaller than the previous strata's unit sizes. The sizes of these units now are studios starting at 420, one bedroom starting at 543 square feet, and two bedrooms at 754 square feet. Are these units appropriate for real families? The need now is for affordable rentals. These units are not affordable. Using average West Side rents for new rentals, we can assume that the rents will be in the ballpark of studio, 1800, a one-bedroom, 2000, and a two-bedroom, 3000. This is not affordable. Does that mean that any new rentals now built on the West Side will not be affordable? As citizens of Vancouver, are we okay with this? I'm not. If developers cannot build affordable rental units for the people of this city, that means that the current model for delivering these units is broken, and we must find another one. And then the last reason is, if you approve this application, you will be setting a precedence. First, this is not the first rezoning application in the neighborhood to be rezoned after being approved from strata to rental and from a concrete structure to a timber. 618 West 33rd got pulled a week before its public hearing. If this is approved, we will definitely see more rezoning applications like this one. And secondly, in Phase 3 of the CCP, changes were made regarding the decrease in public involvement in order to make things easier or faster to build. I do not mind this if we are building the right kind of housing. We already have developers determining what is built. Do we really want developers determining what will be built based upon their profit margin after an application has been already approved? We should not make it easier to build the wrong kind of housing. And lastly, we need to set the bar higher than just generally meeting the CCP intent. Thank you.
Thanks so much. I don't see any questions for you, so thanks very much for calling in this evening. Counsel, I'm going to make my first call now for speakers, as the previous speaker was the only registered. So 1-833-353-8610, 42339 pound list, and I'll check with the clerks. Is there anybody else on the line?
No.
Thank you. I'm going to call the number again, 1-833-353-8610, 52339 pound. It's on the live stream, it's on Twitter. Clerks? Anybody?
Still no one.
Okay, third call, 1-833-353-8610. The rest of the details on the live stream and on Twitter. And it is 6:53, Council. We'll come back at 6:58 to finish this item. Thanks so much.
Mayor Stewart, the clerk here. And I'm told no more speakers.
Great. Okay, so we're going to close the speakers list. And as we've had no public comments or a few public comments after 5:00 PM today, we're going to close the receipt of public comments and move on to the rest of this decision. So just ask the applicant, do you have any closing comments?
No closing comments at this time.
Thanks very much. Staff, any closing comments?
No closing comments, Mayor.
Great. Counsel, any questions for staff? I don't see anybody, so can we have someone move this?
Move the recommendations, Counselor Carr.
Thank you, Seconder. Seconder.
Counselor Boyle.
Thank you, Counselor Boyle. All right, so we're moving to debate now. Anybody have anything to say on this one? Counselor Swanson, please go ahead, up to five.
I'm just looking at the affordability stats here. It looks like you have to have 72,000 to be able to live here in a studio. And a family with one child needs about 122,000 a year. And the average renter household only makes about 50,000. And only 28% of renter households make over 80,000. So about 70% of renter households will be excluded from this building just by price. So just like the other parts of the Canby corridor, it's creating an elite neighborhood. So I'm going to have a really hard time voting for it.
Thank you. Counselor Hardwick.
Yeah, I'm reminded again that this is a business deal. The developer has determined that it is more profitable to produce market housing than it is strata condos. And all of the other descriptions around this really do boil down to this fundamental truth, that this is a business deal. We're not doing this because, you know, we're sympathetic to having more rental housing. We're doing it because it's a good deal. So let's be real about that. So my concerns about this are overall, as I've expressed before, I see some fundamentally flawed planning that our decisions are being made on. We were just told again that this taps into, for example, the Housing Vancouver strategy targets, which are still waiting for the data to support the veracity of those targets. And I look at things as like the housing assessment rolls from BC Assessment. I see exponential land lift, and that's not because we've made more land. It's because we're selling more product on that land. And I think it's really important that Council realizes that, again, every time we approve a proposal like this, a rezoning like this, that's based on flawed policy, we're making matters worse, not better. Thank you.
Counselor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Let me offer a little bit of a different tone in my comments on this one. And essentially, we have what was fondly referred to often, I think, by people that drove by at the turret house and its sort of signature location on Canby and King Edward on the corner there. Well-known, sort of, you know, architecturally in terms of standing out. But I've heard from sort of fellow counselors in past hearings when we have had projects in the Canby Corridor, often referred to as a rich ghetto or creation of a rich neighborhood. And we have had either single-family homes or multimillion-dollar homes. Then we move to solely strata development again, which requires people to have the means to buy into an incredibly expensive market in the city of Vancouver. And now, we're just starting to see some rental projects coming forward. So I look at what was essentially a large family lot with, for one, sort of housing one-family household, if you will, where we're now going to end up with 90 rental units in a city where we desperately need rental. Our vacancy rate is still low, despite the fact we're seeing some come back on the market. The need for that kind of housing is not going to diminish. We don't have a massive demand for new condos. So we're getting diversity into a different level of tenure. And I'm pretty sure that a rental unit is a lot more affordable than one large-scale, massive lot that's dedicated. This is on the Canada Line. It's centrally located in terms of accessibility to transit. It's actually located close to Canby Village. So unlike the rest of the Canby Corridor, when you go further south, you can actually get some of your daily needs met by walking or visit grocery stores. And so I actually think this is a bit of an upside to this. And, you know, I don't usually sort of speak this plainly, but I really don't see the productivity in saying no to 90 new market rental units. Trying to choose my words to express this properly, as opposed to turning it down instead of what, just leaving it as one, what was one large lot? How is that going to help? Is that going to create another 90 families that may not have been able to stay in Vancouver because they couldn't find rental? I don't think so. Is it going to enable people to have bought strata condo that couldn't get into the market? I don't think so. So, you know, from my perspective, I think that given where this is located, it makes sense to bring in some diversity of different tenure and housing types. And I favor diversity in our neighborhoods, and that means people have different income levels and at different stages in their life, and that quite honestly have different means and different levels of affordability. So I just really felt compelled, based on what I'm hearing, to speak up and suggest that. So I'm going to leave it at that, but I think that we continue to need rental. Would everybody like to see the rental be more affordable? Of course, absolutely. Do we have a magic wand to wave on that? No, but we are trying to work towards it. So I just think that we have to be a little bit realistic about not just turning everything down, but maybe bringing forward some alternatives if we're just going to suggest that we say no all the time. So I am going to be supporting this project tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kerr.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So, you know, in three terms on council, I have seen a lot of strata development on Canby. The decisions around the Canby Corridor predated my time as a counselor. But while I've been on council, there have been so many condos, very high-end condos built on the Canby Corridor, that they're like too numerous for me to count. I mean, I just remember public hearing after public hearing when it was strata development projects landing on the table, none of which were affordable. And so I have to agree with Counselor Kirby Young that in my mind, seeing 90 market rental units in this quarter is better than seeing a strata project. The reason being that strata projects are far less affordable for wage earners within this city than our rental units. Many, many sort of mature cities around the world have incredible amounts of rental housing. And people even with very, very good and high incomes end up renting, and they are lifelong rentals. I mean, that is a sort of, I think, a transition in many cities. And maybe it's going to happen in our city. All I know is that these units are going to be more affordable for more people than the high-end stratas that I have seen come forward in the Canby Corridor. All legitimate under the plan that has been developed there. And I don't think that it's, I mean, to me, that whether it is more lucrative to have a rental development now is an interesting point. That's not the way we make decisions, though. We make decisions based on what is intended within a plan, what is there in terms of zoning, the kind of bylaws and programs that we are supporting, whether they be rental, encouraging rental housing or not. And in this case, this fits the plan. It is delivering market rental, which is more affordable housing. I'm happy to see that it's wood-framed. In fact, I know our speaker spoke about the change in its type, but I'd rather have wood-framed with lower embodied emissions than a concrete building, given the urgency of acting on climate. So it's the reason why I moved this motion, and I'm going to be supporting it.
Thank you, Counselor Kerr. Apologies for the puppy wailing there in the background. And I'll move on to Counselor Weep.
Yeah, can I do a point of information through you to staff?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if staff had talked to the proponent about a MRT project or different levels of affordability on this site, recognizing its proximity to transit.
I'll ask staff, planning staff.
Hi, Cynthia La from the Rezoning Centre. No, we didn't speak with the applicant, but the applicant proposed this as a rental project. And as it fits with the Canby Corridor Plan, staff, we're in support.
Okay, and recognizing there's no preset CACs. Okay, and recognizing there's no preset CACs because it's rental, is that correct for the neighborhood?
That's correct, under the CAC policy.
And I know that there's rumors that this was an archaeological site. Have there been confirmation that that has been reviewed?
Alicia DeGruy here, rezoning planner. We've checked the site. All the sites that have potential for archaeological significance are flagged in our system, and this site hasn't been flagged as significant.
Okay. Thank you. So hearing that, I will be supportive of this project, recognizing that it's important to get good rental close to transit.
Thanks. Thank you. Counselor Swanson, up to five.
Yeah, I just wanted to answer some of the previous arguments. Yes, rental is cheaper than strata and is cheaper than single-family housing. But in this case, we're giving the developer the ability to extract a profit from ninety units of housing as opposed to two units of housing. And we're also giving the developer three-point-four million in CACs. So for those gifts, I would think that we could extract at least a few units that would actually be affordable. So that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you, Counselor Swanson. That's it, I think, for comments, and so we can call the vote on this one?
Personal, point of personal privilege.
Yes, go ahead, to Counselor.
Yes, I can't seem to get my voting panel up. I'm so sorry, it's blocked, but if you could vote, cast my vote in support, thank you.
Okay, great. There we go. Great, so that has passed counsel with Counselor Hardwick and Counselor Swanson in opposition. Okay, counsel. Number two. And we're on item number three, which is the rezoning on nineteen ninety-nine East Hastings Street. Does anybody wish to declare a conflict of interest on this one? I don't hear anybody, so clerks, if you want to read the application and summary correspondence, that'd be great.
There is an application by Boniface Olex Sweet Polytano Architects to rezon nineteen forty-three to nineteen ninety-nine East Hastings Street from industrial, commercial, and residential district to C.D. One Comprehensive Development District. To permit the development of a story mixed-use building containing ad-grade commercial space, hundred-and-thirty-one strata residential units and two live-work units. A building height of thirty-one-point-five meter and a floor-space ratio of four-point-zero are proposed. The following correspondence has been received since we furloughed to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list, and we see the public comments. Eighteen pieces of correspondence in support, eight pieces of correspondence in opposition, and one piece of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to five P.M. today.
Thanks so much. Let's see, we do have speakers on the list, counsel, so we'll have Scott Erdman from the Rezoning Centre to go through the proposal. And then move on to hear from the applicant team and the public.
Hi there, this is Scott Erdman. Just doing a quick check that you can hear my voice and see the PowerPoint on your screen?
Yep, loud and clear.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and counsel. My name is Scott Erdman, and I am the rezoning planner for this rezoning application at nineteen forty-three to nineteen ninety-nine East Hastings Street. The site is located in Grandview Woodland at the northwest corner of East Hastings Street and Semlin Drive, as seen on the map highlighted in red. It is currently developed with low-rise commercial buildings with surface parking, and there are no residential tenants on site. This site is at the western end of the East Village local shopping area along Hastings Street and its adjacent other commercial buildings. Directly across the street is East Pei Elementary School. Light industrial buildings are to the north of the site, while a mix of detached houses and low-rise apartment buildings are in nearby residential areas. The site is zoned M.C. two, which allows for commercial, light industrial, and residential development, and is shown in red on the map. Across the lane to the north is an I-two district consisting of light industrial buildings. To the east along Hastings Street is C-two, C-one, which allows low-rise commercial buildings with conditional residential use above the ground floor. R.M. zones, which allow for multifamily dwellings, are to the north and south of Hastings Street. The site is located within the catchment of East Pei Elementary and Britannia Elementary Schools and Templeton Secondary School. According to the Vancouver School Board's twenty-nineteen draft long-range facilities plan, capacity exists at all three schools, both for present day and for forecasted enrollment. Pandora Park is located two blocks to the east. The site is within a shopping area that stretches along Hastings Street and includes a large amount of retail shops and services. The site is well-served by transit, including both local and the new R-five rapid bus service along Hastings Street. This proposal is being considered under the Grandview Woodland Community Plan, which was adopted in twenty-sixteen and is a comprehensive document designed to enable development in the neighborhood over the next thirty years. It strikes a balance between a wide range of considerations, including community input, community needs assessments, citywide policies, technical and design analysis, and economic testing. The site is within the Hastings Slopes sub-area, where the plan supports mixed-use mid-rise buildings that take advantage of the views and continue their retail presence along Hastings Street. For sites between Victoria Drive and Semlin Drive, buildings up to eight stories and density up to four-point-zero F.S.R. can be considered. A mix of commercial uses is required on the first floor, with residential uses above. Buildings should provide front setbacks to achieve a minimum eighteen-foot-wide sidewalk, and an additional seven-foot setback of the podium at ground level is required for small public plazas, also known as urban rooms, to allow for outdoor seating and inviting public realm. The proposal before you tonight was received in July twenty-nineteen. Processing time was extended for negotiation of the community amenity contribution. The proposal is for an eight-story mixed-use building with ground-floor commercial retail units and a hundred-and-thirty-one strata residential units above. Forty percent of the units are two or more bedrooms, exceeding the minimum requirements under the city's family room policy. Two live-work units fronting Semlin Drive are also included. A small plaza or urban room is proposed for the corner of Hastings and Semlin, adjacent to the retail spaces, to provide outdoor seating, landscaping, and gathering spaces to enhance the public realm. Three levels of underground parking and an F.S.R. of four-point-zero are proposed. A pre-application and city-hosted open house were both held as in-person events prior to COVID-nineteen. The city-led open house took place in October twenty-nineteen and was attended by approximately twenty people. Staff have received a total of twenty-seven responses for this application. Feedback included support for the proposed height, density, and building design, for the retail and services spaces, and for the inclusion of the urban room public plaza. Concerns included comments regarding the affordability of the housing, for the height and density of the proposal, and foreshadowing on neighboring properties. Staff have reviewed the comments and have determined that a proposal meets the intents of the Grandview Woodland Community Plan for this site. Conditions have been included in Appendix B to further improve the design development of the proposal. This application generates over one-point-five million dollars in CACs to be allocated towards the community benefits outlined in the Grandview Woodland Public Benefit Strategy. Further, total DCLs of approximately three-point-one million would be anticipated, in addition to a public art contribution of just over two-hundred-and-thirty thousand. As part of the Restart Smart Vancouver Initiative in response to COVID-nineteen, if approved, this project would generate approximately five-hundred off-site and on-site construction jobs, contributing to Vancouver's post-COVID economic recovery. In conclusion, this proposal meets the intents of the Grandview Woodland Community Plan, and the proposed height, density, form, and land uses are all consistent with what was anticipated in the plan for this location. This proposal would generate four-point-nine million in public benefits. Staff recommend the application be approved, subject to conditions outlined in Appendix B. Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Staff and the applicant team are available for any questions you may have.
Thanks very much. So we're gonna see if, yeah, any... Actually, is the applicant team here?
Yeah, applicant team is present.
Yes, would you like to say anything or just answer questions?
We will be available for questions and answers.
Thanks so much. Counselor Dominado, questions up to five minutes, either staff or the applicant.
Thanks, Mayor, and I have questions for the applicant. I just wanted to start with just your general comments around, these are all strata market units. And obviously, we've seen shifts in that area and obviously, in the development community, moving away from strata to rental. Just curious if you could comment on your decision to pursue this.
Chloe, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Yeah, are you particularly referring to exploring other options like rental for this property?
Yeah, I'm just curious about, because obviously, we just saw an application that changed and went from strata to rental. I'm just curious about the decision and thinking around pursuing strata here and not rental.
Okay, well, I guess John Stavell is also present, would like to answer your question.
Thank you. I can speak to that. John's developed for Minus Properties. Our company does a lot of rental housing. We periodically do some strata. Probably about a quarter probably do the strata, and the other three quarters is rental. We think this project is good, is a good opportunity for first-time buyers. We focused on having relatively compact and modular units, and I think there's a lot of desire in this neighborhood, which has probably got more rental relative to condo than most neighborhoods where new development is occurring. We think there's a lot of demand for the many people who still want to own a home or are trying to enter the market at the, at the kind of entry level in a community like this. And also, during the community engagement process, and I think in a number of the letters we received, there's a actual community support and positivity around providing opportunities to buy instead of to rent. So our objectives and our idea for the building seem to align well with the community.
Thanks, Mr. Stavell. I appreciate that. Just another question in relation to the, the commercial on the bottom retail. How many commercial units will there be, and roughly, and will there be enough setback in terms of the sidewalk space to enable, if there's, you know, if you end up potentially with cafes or anything, to have outdoor seating? Because one of the challenges along that corridor is that the sidewalks are actually quite narrow and don't actually leave much opportunity for any kind of outdoor activity adjacent to buildings in the neighborhoods. I'm just curious about that.
Is this a question for staff or for us?
For either, whoever feels they want to take that one.
Okay, well, I mean, like, I can add from the applicant team that the setback that we have proposed for this project along East Hastings is more than the required one. And also, the creation of urban rooms, which was a requirement or suggestion by the plan. We gather most of these smaller spaces into a large one located in the corner that is over two-thousand square feet, that would allow this outdoor interaction. Surprisingly, this was designed prior to the pandemic, and now we see that basically is responding to actual needs because there is a lot of outdoor space for these CRU spaces. Also, this site, because of the slow it has, has a potential to have commercial retail units that are, that have view, and they are open with light to the north. And that also has the privilege to have an outdoor deck that looks over the lane. And that means that not only the retail units will be enjoying outdoor space or patio space along East Hastings, they, they have the possibility to also have something on the back. So it's kind of a double-loaded retail space with windows both sides.
Great. Thank you very much for that explanation. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor Boyle. Up to five.
Thanks, Mayor. I have a number of questions for city staff. The first, actually, I have one question for the developer. Maybe I'll ask that first, since this is our only chance, and it relates to Counselor Dominado's question. I'm curious to know if the MRRP program, the Moderate-Income Rental Housing Pilot Project, was considered for this particular site?
No, we didn't consider the MRRP for this site.
Okay. Okay, I have a number of questions for city staff, and I'll start with, I'm interested to know if there's more staff could say about the local use of CAC and DCL money. There's certainly a number of needs in the neighborhood, so I'd be interested to hear what those might go towards or what that process is, so the community has a sense of how that, how they might see that public benefit related to this project.
Counselor Boyle, Cynthia La here from the Rezoning Centre. Could you clarify your question, please?
I'm just hoping staff can speak to how the CAC and DCL money related to this project might be used in the neighborhood if the project goes ahead, or clarify for the public what that process is.
Yes, this is Scott Erdman from the rezoning. So the, the CAC for this project is a cash contribution, and the money from that would be allocated towards benefits identified in the Grandview Woodland Public Benefit Strategy.
Okay, one of my specific questions about public benefit is around safety in crossing Hastings. It's obviously a very busy street, and I'm conscious of the elementary school directly across the street. So I wonder if staff have any specific plans about improved safety, particularly for, well, for families and seniors in crossing between this housing and the elementary school across the street?
Yes, one of the infrastructure upgrades that is required as part of this project will be a new pedestrian crossing at the intersection of Hastings and Semlin, which is directly adjacent that school that you mentioned.
Okay, great. And I have another question as it relates to Pei Elementary there. And I guess I could look this information up, too, but I'm sure it's of interest to others. Do staff have information about the student population there? And in particular, I'm interested to know about the Indigenous-focused program and mainstream or non-Indigenous program, and how the two of those fit, assuming many of the families in this building would end up at Pei.
Thank you, Counselor. Yes, so staff don't have that level of detail available at the moment, but we're happy to, to follow up later. I can confirm that this school is focused on Indigenous programming and serving that, that community, but I don't have any more details than that at the moment.
Okay, great. Would be happy to hear that later. Those are all my questions, Mayor.
Thanks so much. Counselor Kirby Young, up to five questions.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. My first question for the applicant, and particularly interested in the inclusion of the two of the two live-work units that were referenced, and didn't hear a lot of discussion, see a lot of detail in there, and I'm wondering with the shift, you sort of anticipated, you were saying pre-pandemic, you focused on that outdoor space. I'm wondering with the shift, if there was any consideration to a more robust number of live-work units in there, and just given sort of the likely residual and work from home and people's changing patterns?
Well, the main idea of having the live works, and you can see it probably on the plans, is to make a smooth connection between the commercial retail use along Hastings, turning the corner on Semblin, and how this project connects into a more industrial use down Semblin Street. So basically, we are constrained in between the front passion Semblin for the amount of units that we are proposing. We managed to accommodate two units that basically will be located facing Semblin and prior to the lane, across the cafe that is next to the lane, which is the Palet Coffee. So we think that is kind of a good transition into the neighborhood, into the different uses, and that will articulate well the streetscape. So we are limited, to answer your question, we are limited with the frontest we have on that, and we will, we were able to accommodate only two units.
Okay, so just to clarify, so you're saying you were constrained, or the goal was to have those be at street level? You wouldn't have considered any kind of live-work configuration on higher floors? Is that right?
Yeah, well, we are more thinking about the activation of the streetscape with this use rather than having units above grade, yeah.
Okay, because the intention would be there's visibility into the work piece, the work component of the space?
Yeah, I mean, like, to allow, for example, an artist to have a little gallery exposition or something, and having frontest on the street.
Okay. No, that's interesting. And then, in terms of the plaza, and it notes that it's a covered plaza, that's also, we don't see that very often, and we do live in, sometimes people call it raincoover, and we've had a lot of call for that space, that type of covered outdoor space during the pandemic. I wonder if you could just describe a little bit more why you move forward covered, and I'm just, I'm curious, because that's unusual, we don't see that often.
Well, I mean, like, part of the requirements of the urban rooms is mainly that they should be open to the sky, but basically, since we also have frontest to the CRU spaces, there is also a requirement to have cover areas. So basically, based on the proportion of this urban room and the plaza that is retail proportion that allows, I mean, like, decent height, then basically, we are proposing an extended canopy over that will still allow light to get into, but will protect users.
Okay, and the plaza is public access?
Yeah, the plaza is public access, it's an extension of the sidewalk at the corner of Semblin and East Hastings.
Okay, and then third, quick question, following up in Counselor Dominado's, and you said the setback was more generous or larger than was required. So did I hear clearly that that would allow for sufficient space for patio tables if one of the commercial units was a cafe, for example, and still have sufficient room for pedestrians and passersby, people with accessibility needs?
Yeah, that's right.
So it could have a cafe use and not impede sort of that busy stuff?
Yeah, I confirm that. And basically, yeah, I mean, many units, they will be able to enjoy the frontest of the corner plaza, which is, as I said, significant in dimension, about 2,000 square feet.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor Weep, up to five.
First question is to staff. Seeing the rooftop amenity space in green roofs, is this something that staff's hoping that we could see in developments moving forward on a consistent basis?
Something aloud from the rezoning center. The Canby Corridor Plan allows for the additional height for co-located indoor and outdoor amenity uses on top of the buildings, and that's specific to the Canby Corridor Plan.
But, oh, so this isn't, I mean, this is not a Canby corridor?
Sorry about that, but this is the Grandview Woodland Plan. Apologies for that confusion.
But this is something that we, is it policy that we're going to see on more projects coming forward? Because I think it's great, looking at this shared amenity space, this looks like a very livable building. So I'm just wondering, is that part of our livability standards, hopefully, moving forward as a city? We have guidelines that support this as our Green City work, or is this something that the proponent has just brought forward?
Yes, Counselor, where it's appropriate, we do support it, and particularly also where there is policy, so that's why I was referring to the Canby Corridor Plan. However, in this area in Grandview Woodland, it is located on the podium level, so that that wouldn't necessarily fit in this case, but often where we can, we are encouraging it.
So it's encouraged. Okay, and my second question to the proponent, understanding, I know a few people that live in buildings with colored glass, is that something that we might see removed as it goes through the development phase, recognizing that to live in a building that changes light and has bright colored windows is kind of seen as more dated and might not increase the livability of the units?
To answer the question, I guess the color that you are able, or that you are referring to on the elevation, they more refer to spaniel areas, basically not necessarily glazing areas. So anyway, something like as part of the energy calculation of the building, we have to have open, certain amount of opening, certain amount of opaque response to the elevation. So what you're seeing in the elevations as color is opaque, non-translucent areas.
I was talking more about the blue and green, the glass that's going floor to ceiling on a lot of units.
No, that's, I guess that's a representation on the elevation, but that we are not committed to do any color glazing here.
Okay. And my last question is for staff on the open living room concept. What is our parameters, or what are we asking developers to bring forward in creating these outdoor spaces? And what's kind of our guidelines, or I guess our goal on how much of this type of space we're going to create in neighborhoods?
Thank you, Counselor. This is Scott Urban in the rezoning center. So as far as urban rooms or these small public plazas, the Grandview Woodland Plan encourages these specifically along Hastings Street, because it allows for place-making opportunities, and it improves the public realm by providing landscaping and increased setbacks for outdoor seating adjacent retail spaces. In the plan, it does suggest a minimum width of 50 feet wide and a minimum depth of 25 feet from the property line for these spaces.
And this building's room is at what depth?
So for this one, it does have a depth of 25 feet from the property line, but it has a width of 84 feet.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor Dominado, you just have 15 seconds left.
Thanks. So can I move for a second round of questions then, or in this time? Okay.
Well, there are other opportunities, unless it's to the applicant.
Well, to the applicant or staff, is, I'm just curious about if the decision has been reached as to whether there'll be art on site, or whether a cash contribution will be made for an off-site public art piece?
Yeah, there is, there is a public art contribution as part of the rezoning condition, and basically, we have already advanced some preliminary presentations with the committee, public art community.
And will, sorry, will the art be on site, or is it going to be a cash contribution? Because the report suggests?
No, will be, will be on site, yeah.
It'll be on site. I guess my question then, and this is probably to staff?
And we're over the five. If it's the staff, can you?
Well, I guess it would be to the applicant, because they're probably, can I move?
Yes, you can. Another round of questions?
Yes, please.
Okay, a second or?
Second.
All in favor, yea?
Yea.
Opposed, nay? Sorry, did I hear a nay? No, okay. Counselor Dominado, please go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you, Counsel. I just want to ask, it's either to maybe both to the applicant or to staff, is in terms of the public art, is there an opportunity to engage the school in that public art component? And I ask because I was there for the renaming of the school to Hupai, which is to represent the Indigenous community, and as Counselor Boyle noted, the focus on Indigenous programming, but also in serving, there is a big urban Indigenous community. And is there an opportunity to engage the schoolchildren there in that public? That's what I was asking, if it would be on site, and how we might do that, and if that's been done before? I recognize we typically commission professional artists, but what a fantastic opportunity. And I'm just wondering if that's something that's within the realm of possibility and...
Oh, well, as I said to you, we already started some presentations with the committee, but we are at this stage, we are pretty early on planning the public art, and what you are proposing is an excellent idea as well. So we are open to see this as an opportunity to bring into our public strategy, public art strategy.
Okay, yeah, I think it would be a really exciting collaboration, and I think you, the school would be very willing if they were approached. Anyways, I wanted to ask that, and I think it's really important. Okay, that was it from me, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much.
I just wanted to add to that comment that basically, we've been engaged with the school all our, let's say, public consultation meetings, they've been held at the school, and we've been actively contributing to the school as well. So we know people at the school, and we've been in constant communication, because, well, it's our neighborhood, and we want to have kind of a nice relationship doing construction and after, give them the response that they need for.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Counsel, I don't see anybody else on the list for questions, so we're going to move to hear from the public. We have eight speakers on the list so far. We have speaker number one, Patricia Barnes.
Hello, Mayor and Counsel?
Hello.
Can you hear me loud and clear?
We can. Please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I'm Patricia Barnes, and I'm the Executive Director of the Hastings North Business Improvement Association, and I do, and I am a resident of the city of Vancouver. The VIA would like to show our support of this development. We have been in, we've had conversations with the developer and have been watching the plans come to fruition. We can, we were intimately involved with the Grandview Woodland Community Plan and are happy to see developments moving ahead that conform to that plan. Our area definitely needs additional densification and housing in the area, and we do have a lot of rental development happening in the area, so to have a strata building is also a nice change to allow people to own as well as rent. It also increases the density, which allows us to support our small businesses, which, as you know, we require people in the neighborhood to come and shop and use our services. And also, it continues the revitalization of Hastings Street going west of Nanaimo, as we start to see more activity and greater street activation along that area, which is also really nice, and will give us additional retail business in the area. We're very happy to see the urban room, as you know, along Hastings Street, and as has been mentioned, we have very little access to have community gathering spaces. So to have that built into this building is absolutely fantastic. Love to see that, and really important to us, because our sidewalks are so narrow, and you end up being really close to traffic. So this really is a welcome addition. Also, we're pretty excited to see the incorporation of murals on the walls of the building. We are strong, strongly in favor of murals, and we have our own mural program in the area, so really happy to see that being something the developer is going to add to this building. And I guess we're also very supportive of the mix. It's important that families can live in the area, so we're really happy to see both in the rentals and in the strata, that there is room being and importance being placed on not only just couples and singles, but also families. We think that's really important, and we love to see more children in the neighborhood. So that is my, my presentation for now, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thanks so much for your time this evening. I don't see any questions for you, but just wanted to thanks, thank you for coming in tonight and all you do for the community. Thank you. Okay, Counsel, we've got our second speaker is Sylvain Saler.
Sylvain Saler. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I work for Moto BC's first car sharing co-op. Moto was funded in Vancouver in 1997. It exists to transform communities by providing people with an affordable, convenient, inclusive, and sustainable alternative to owning a car or a second one, and we support the needs of more than 20,000 drivers and 900 organizations. On behalf of Moto, I would like to express our support for this rezoning application. Moto and the applicant intend to enter in an agreement to secure the provision of four electric shared vehicles to be parked in the proposed development for the benefit of the residents and the community at large, and also, as part of these agreements, offer the opportunity to more than 200 residents of the proposed development to join Moto for free. So similar transport demand management measures have been successfully implemented in other residential mixed-use development projects in Vancouver, and so for about 15 years or so. And Moto's latest annual member survey showed us that 48% of Moto members used to own or lease a vehicle, but now use Moto as their primary vehicle, while another 27% of Moto members never owned or leased a car and use Moto as their primary vehicle. The first two reasons Moto members indicated joining Moto are, first, that it's cheaper than owning, and second, that a motor car, or motor cars were located near their home and easily accessible. So we're confident by that by locating shared cars in the proposed development and providing future residents with an opportunity to join our car sharing co-op for free, we will put together conditions for many households, families, and individuals to reduce their vehicle ownership and save thousands of dollars per year in transportation expenses, while encouraging them to use active transportation that is walking and cycling and public transit more often. And these are very important things, given the challenges that exist in Vancouver around housing affordability. I think anything we can do to allow more people to have more money available at the end of the month for things that they value most, more at least than owning a car, is very important. And second, to try to have more Vancouverites reduce their impact on the environment, reduce their GHG emissions. And so for all these reasons, Moto encourage members of council to approve this rezoning application. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You do have a question. Counselor Weep, up to five minutes.
Yeah, you stated you got four cars in this building. What is the economy, how many units do you normally need to have in a building to make it feasible for a Moto to be included? Recognizing we voted on a lot of projects today that have 90 units, and I'm wondering, this is the first project that has four units. So what is the normal scale that you would need to make your finances work, and why four in this building?
Because all Moto vehicles provided in connection with development projects are available to all Moto members, not just those who will live in the building. not just those who will live in the building. The size of the building doesn't, the size of the building alone doesn't matter. We are looking at the community at large. And of course, there is an influence on the size of the building because there will be some demand coming from the building. But this is not the only criteria that we're looking at. Here, we are looking at a neighborhood where Moto already has an existing membership, a significant membership. And because of the good access to public transit on Hastings, plus mixed-use zoning, access to different services, we really feel like it's a good area to increase service density. And so the building could have been slightly smaller or bigger. And we feel like four will be good to serve the need of the community, not just the residents. It's really serving the community that matters to us.
Okay, and last quick question. Have you worked with the building proponent to make sure that these sites are easy to get in and out of and make it easy for Moto members to access these automobiles?
Yes, so there are two things. First, the city of Vancouver, to allow for shared vehicles to be provided in connection with this project will require statutory right-of-way on into the parking spaces to ensure that they're specifically designated for car sharing use. And second, that they're accessible 24/7 to Moto members. So that's the first thing. There will be an agreement between, or there already may be, an agreement between the applicant and the city. And secondly, there'll be an agreement between Moto and the applicant. And the stalls will have to, and access to those stalls will have to be compliant with the set construction standards that we have and that we apply across the board in every development project that we get involved into. So it ensures consistency, ease of access for diverse populations that are using our service. Think about families or people with limited mobility. We're taking this into account. And we're confident that the stalls will be consistent based on our conversations that we have had with the applicant. The stalls will be consistent with those standards and that we will be able to have electric vehicles, which is really important for us.
Perfect. I was going to ask about electric vehicles, we just answered it. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you. That's it for questions, speaker. So thanks very much for coming in tonight. And we're going to move to our next speaker, who is Dustin La Prairie, speaker number three.
Hello, Mayor and council. Thanks for the opportunity to comment on the rezoning application at East Hastings and Semlin Drive. I've called in to offer a few brief comments in support of this project. As a young professional who would eventually like to own a home, I think this is exactly the kind of housing we need more of. As you are well aware, single-family homeownership is out of reach for most of us who came after the baby boomer generation. Because the cost of housing is so high in Vancouver, I think we need more affordable options for homeownership. I see condos as a part of that solution. I think the project has been well thought out. I like that the developer has included an urban plaza and coffee shop at ground level. Since more people will be working from home in the future, I also think it's great that this project incorporates live-work studios. I think this is a well-thought-out development and I could see myself living here. I hope to see this project move forward. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much. I don't see any questions for you, so we're going to move on to the next speaker. Thanks for participating tonight. Council, we have got speaker number four, Andrea Avison.
Hello, Mayor and council. My name is Andrea. I would like, hi. My name is Andrea. I would like to offer a few comments in support of the housing proposal put forward by Reliance Properties in the 1900 block of East Hastings Street. I live in East Vancouver and I work a few blocks away from the development site. This neighborhood has found many hidden gems from small independent retailers to artist workshops and coffee shops. But the neighborhood could use some sprucing up. It can be a little scary in this neighborhood at night. And I think this development would help to revitalize this part of Hastings Street and contribute to the vibrance and safety of the area. With more restaurants and retail popping up in this neighborhood, I expect that demand for housing in the neighborhood will grow in the years to come. I appreciate that the developers are proposing to improve the public realm surrounding the property with upgrades to the laneway. I'm excited to see this project come to life. Thank you for listening. Good night.
Thank you. I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. We've got Keith Stewart, speaker number five.
Mayor Stewart, it is, excuse me, it is the clerk here. And I'm understanding that Keith Stewart has not called in.
Okay, thanks. We have speaker number six and Stephen Boas.
Yes, and I have some slides, if they can be brought up, please.
Clerks.
For the slides? And then, yeah, thank you for your time. For allowing me to speak.
Sure.
Okay, so, yes, my name's Stephen Boas. I have a degree in landscape architecture. I live in Grandview Woodland. I'm a renter. And the first slide you see is a shot of the final Citizens Assembly Public Roundtable held in, on May 2015. And I was actually there and I was at the table when we were doing our walkabouts, when we were discussing this stretch of East Hastings. So I really know a lot about discussions. Next slide. It's important to do some fact-checking about the city's own policies, which is the, what is called now the Grandview Woodland Community Plan. And what the plan says, I know the Citizens Assembly wanted to have some varying heights rather than having one monolith long slab there. But what your plan actually says is, okay, north side up to eight stories, up to four FSR. So I'm going to get back to that. But if you actually read the fine print in the policy for consideration for rezoning, it says, and this is a little bit technical, but it says the portion of any building above essentially 65 feet in height should not exceed a typical tower floor plate of 603.9 square meters or 6,500 square feet. Now, if you look at the plans and you look at the elevations, you will clearly see that above 65 feet, there is a floor plate area, part of the building, of 16,526 square feet, which is well, 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 excess of the maximum in the policy as written. So if we do the fact-check, this does not comply with the Grandview Woodland Community Plan. Next slide, slide number three. And you can see that your city's policies and you look at these elevations, you'll see about 67 and a half feet. If you look at the front edge on East Hastings to the end of that level. But if you look at the rear side, the laneway side, it's more like 84, 85 feet. So the midpoint's about 75 feet, give or take. So this maximum floor plate is well exceeded if you look at the cross slope. Next slide. You see some contour lines on slide number four. There's about a drop of between four to five meters, give or take, across the site. Next slide. In terms of the city's own policies, well, it's actually eight or nine levels. If you look at these elevations, you kind of see that there's like a double floor on the first level. And at the back, you could see there's like an amenity there. And in towards the laneway, it looks like there's even 10 floors there. So here we have a problem because the intent of the community plan was to have eight stories. And at that time, the planners never set a dimensional height was because they said, oh, we'll have your back. We'll look at the intent and so on. And the intent is not to do like a nine-story building. The intent is actually to have a eight-story building. If you, let's say, take a dimensional height of 80 feet and you put that in the CD1 bylaws as a condition, you could actually meet the intent of the policy. And also, if you change the CD1 bylaw and you save maximum of 6,500 square feet for that, for any part of the building above 65 feet, you're meeting the plan policy. Next slide, please. If we look at dwelling units per acre, Grandview Woodland is growing. It's pretty high in terms of the city average, considering that we have all this industrial land. Next slide. Here, I want to talk about the population figures in Appendix F included in this staff report. And staff are saying, well, first of all, the community plan is talking about growth since 2011. And here, they're talking about 2016. So there's already been a moving of the goalposts. But what I really find fascinating is that between 2011 and 2016, your own figures from Statscan says that the community area grew by 1,870 people at a 6.4% rate, which is higher than the Vancouver average of 4.6% in that timeframe. Just Statscan and your neighborhood grew, breaking down for Grandview Woodland. And here, you have a staff slide saying that, well, Grandview Woodland's only grown by 30 people since the 2016 census dated, updated on Q2 of 2020. And I believe that this is actually, has to be revisited. I don't see any factual information behind it. And if you go to the next slide, there's a building just up the street at Victoria with 27 units. At Victoria and Ferndale. Go a little bit further up first, first and, or first and Victoria. There's another new building that's been built since the census. There's an occupied building that's now occupied at Woodland and Third. There's a lot of units that have come online since then. So I'm a little bit skeptical about this figure.
We're just at five minutes.
Okay, I'll just wrap up.
No, actually, you have a question from, you have a question from councillor Hardwick. So go ahead, councillor Hardwick.
Well, I want to pick up on a couple of things that you said. One was, of course, that this does not comply with the Grandview Woodlands Community Plan, since staff has stated that it does. And two, I want to talk about the data. Where would you like to, which would you like to go with first?
Well, I just also wanted to say that I spoke to a former city planner recently and I asked him about my interpretation of the plan. And they said it's absolutely correct. That's the way to interpret the floor plate. So I'm pretty confident in my interpretation of the plan there. So it does not comply and there's a sequestering of the CAC, that's another issue. But maybe we can talk about the data, your questions about the data.
Well, yeah, I mean, seriously suggesting there's only been 30 people move into Grandview Woodlands? That's, what did you say, Appendix F?
Appendix F, it's there and it's not sourced. I don't know who did it, if it was a rezoning planner in charge or the person who signed this policy document. But it's been put in that policy statement for council to consider. And my concern is that based on, you know, past experience and just going through this neighborhood, looking at all the construction that's gone on over the last few years, you know, I'm very skeptical about that data being presented. Plus the Vancouver housing figures of 72,000 new units over 10 years that we don't have the data since last July that we're waiting for. So I think it's important to have the right data to make the correct decisions and to monitor it correctly.
Well, obviously, I agree with you on that. But let's go back to what would make this compliant and how far off is it from your perspective? From, we've heard a lot of things in the plus column from the VIA in particular and the desire to get some sort of reinvigoration in that part of Hastings Street. What do you think, how close is it from your perspective?
Well, it's actually not that terribly far off. Like there have been applications that have gone through that, in my opinion, were much further off. So here, if you said that you've got a dimensional height of 80 feet maximum and it's a terms and condition, then you can follow the spirit of the plan. And the other thing you could do is just say that there's no part of the building, floor plate that can be above 65 feet, that's greater than 6,500 square feet as per the plan. And then you're technically complying with the plan.
Well, I'm sure the developer is listening and it's a very reputable developer. I'm sure they'll be taking that into consideration. I just wanted to touch.
My issue here, okay.
Sorry, go ahead. No, no, you go ahead.
My concern is that something like this key fact has not been mentioned in the policy report. I did not find any mention of the floor plate and the maximum and so on. So that's, like, I'm just flagging that as kind of my fact-check. But over to you, councillor.
Well, do you think that's because of, you know, loss of institutional memory? Since, I guess, it was 2015 was that slide that you opened with, with the picture of everybody sitting around the tables?
Well, I think partly it does go back to institutional memory. It's also part of the process and, you know, bringing this further out to the community and flagging this point by point. So I think some more rigorous review is needed. So a combination of many of these things. And I'm also very afraid that there were promises made by planners who are now retired or moved on from the city that, you know, the new generation might not know of. And it's also causing issues with the Vancouver Plan and the Broadway Corridor in terms of trying to get public consultation for those processes. If people look at what happened in Grandview Woodland and Marple and Mount Pleasant and the West End.
2021 is the current census year. There may be some hope that we'll see by spring of 2022, some new numbers out of Census Canada or Statscan to inform our process here. But I'd love to see that statement that there's only been 30 people added to Grandview Woodlands since 2016 or 2011?
No, since 2016 on that slide. And I'd also like to see, you know, a little bit of, you know, if there is a big discrepancy there, to see what went wrong and to make sure, you know, that there are processes in place at that time.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's it for questions. I'm going to move on to the next speaker. We have Mark Saul, speaker number seven.
Hello, Mayor and council.
Hi there, please. We sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Awesome, thank you. My name is Mark Saul. I'm a principal of Corbell Commercial, Inc. And I want to speak to you tonight in support of the proposal for 1943 to 1999 East Hastings Street, developed by Reliance Properties. Corbell Commercial, Inc. is a boutique commercial real estate brokerage that specializes in the Gastown, Railtown, Strathcona and East Vancouver markets. As a commercial real estate broker by trade, I want to specifically speak to the benefits the commercial elements of this project have for the community. Now, we represent a number of commercial properties in the immediate area, including several properties along the East Hastings Corridor. The East Hastings Corridor is a critical main arterial route into downtown Vancouver, especially when looking at long-term plans for the removal of the Georgia viaducts. The activation of good, neighborhood-oriented, well-designed commercial retail space along the thoroughfare, together with public realm spaces are much needed in this part of the city. We've seen a significant amount of positive revitalization of East Hastings over the past few years. Again, representing several commercial buildings which have been repositioned and redeveloped, we've seen firsthand the influx of new retail and service-related businesses, as well as some boutique marketing and design firms that have located along the East Hastings Corridor. Additionally, we've seen other successful mixed-use commercial developments along East Hastings and in the area in general, which have activated what otherwise were historically stagnant portions of East Hastings into now vibrant blocks. Now, the project will bring almost 18,000 square feet of new, high-quality, thoughtfully designed commercial space to the community, which, from my perspective, I know will be very sought after for this area. It further extends the continuity of Strathcona and this Grandview Woodlands neighborhoods into the Hastings Sunrise neighborhoods. These spaces, coupled with the residential and the proposed public spaces in the community balcony, also provide a really attractive offering for prospective tenants who are looking to take up space in the increasingly popular and emerging Strathcona, Hastings Sunrise neighborhood. Additionally, the proposed layout of this space also provides a lot of flexibility in terms of adapting to future tenant needs with regards to space. And from a leasing standpoint, this is a very big win. From a personal perspective, I think that this project offers a great suite of benefits that will really work together in terms of bringing people together. I truly love how the commercial space interacts with the public spaces and that Reliance are really exploring ways to really activate the public realm surrounding the site. It's a really great project that offers a lot. Thank you, staff and council, for your time this evening.
Thank you so much. I don't see any questions for you, but appreciate you calling in this evening. And we're going to move to the final speaker on the list for this item, which is Charles Edward Kears, speaker number eight.
Well, good evening, Mayor and council. I'm speaking to you tonight as a community, all community residents and a dog owner, as you can hear. And I'm in support of this application. This proposal will provide a lot of benefits to our community, both in the form of affordable strata condos, which I think is important because there's been a lot of rental buildings approved and being built in the Hastings Sunrise neighborhood, which is fantastic. approved and being built in the Hastings Sunrise neighborhood, which is fantastic, but there has not been as many strata properties. And I know a lot of people are looking for places to buy that are affordable, and this is still an affordable area compared to other parts of the city. So I'm looking forward to that. And also, just through community revitalization, that area is, I've spent a lot of time in that area with the school with my son and going to the sushi restaurant, et cetera, et cetera. But it just seems like it's just a very blah area, and just the revitalization of that area will be really, really awesome and bring a lot more people out that way. New housing and space is very important for local business and food, and it's critical for our neighborhood because oftentimes I'm going to Burnaby to go to certain places because we don't have as much in the Hastings Sunrise area as we should or as we used to based on the population. It's also the live-work option, I think, is pretty attractive in this building. It's important that continued renewal of aging properties is considered to ensure Hastings Sunrise continues to both grow as a community and also remain a safe, desirable place to live, which it does continue to be feel safer, but there's still definite issues. The urban public room, public plaza is very exciting because we really have no spaces to go and have a coffee or drink and hang out outside with other people socially. So I hope that more projects will continue to offer that as well because it's extremely important here. And public art also. So it sounds like it's going to be a really beautiful, well-thought-out project, which is going to be awesome. It's going to be a place where people are going to go, and that area is just going to, you know, it's not really had a lot of popularity, so it's going to be pretty awesome. So the project, in my opinion, is going to add a lot of positive benefit to the neighborhood and keep people in the neighborhood. Like I said, I sometimes have to go to other areas to get what I'm looking for. So as far as public space, et cetera, that's pretty awesome. So that's kind of all I have to say. So thanks for your time this evening and for your consideration of this awesome project.
Thank you so much for calling in. I don't see any questions for you, so we'll just say thanks for participating. And I'm going to go to the first call for speakers. So if anybody would like to speak to this item, 1-833-3538610, code 42339 hashtag first call. Clerks, do we have anybody on the line?
Sorry, I was trying to get my microphone on. No one is on the line for this item, Mayor Stewart.
Okay, try a second call. All the details are on the live stream or Twitter. Second call for speakers on this item. 1999 East Hastings Street. Clerks, anybody there?
No one on the line.
Okay, thanks. We'll do the third call now for this item. And council, it's 8:13. We'll come back at 8:18 to finish this. Thank you. Okay, we're going to close the speakers list now, and we're going to close the receipt of public comments. And I'm just going to ask, does the applicant have any closing comments?
Well, I guess if any further clarification is needed in terms of what this recent speaker brought up about compliance with the plan, we are happy to talk about it.
I'll just say that at this stage in the process, the council cannot ask you questions. So they can only ask staff questions. So if you have anything to say on what any of the speakers have said, please go ahead now, otherwise we can ask staff questions.
We'll leave it for staff to clarify.
Okay, thanks very much. Staff, have any closing comments?
No closing comments from staff. Thank you, Mayor and council.
Okay, council, do you have any questions for councillor Hardwick? Up to five minutes. Questions to staff.
I'm sorry, that must be holdover.
Okay, thanks so much. And, okay, well, I don't see anybody on the queue. Can I have somebody move the report then?
Move councillor Kirbyon.
Thank you, a second or?
Councillor Carr.
I think I heard councillor Carr there. Thanks so much. Okay, so I've got, we're on the queue here for debate. If anybody wants to say anything about this item, please put yourself on the queue. Councillor Boyle, up to five, please.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll be brief. I will be supporting this project. I recognize that in this neighborhood in particular, we have seen more rental housing of late, and I strongly support that. I'm very enthusiastic about that. And like we heard, there is a need to have the CAC and DCL contributions. There are many worthwhile projects in the neighborhood, and this neighborhood, too, this neighborhood especially with the number of renters, has a need for more public benefit, more amenities in the neighborhood. And so I'm glad to see that this project could be part of helping bring that about, including improved safety on Hastings for the number of families that we know live around here. The other thing I do want to state, though, is that I think it's important in projects like this that we don't think about the neighborhood as being a sort of blank slate or in need of revitalization. There actually is quite a lot of life in this particular neighborhood. The families in the neighborhood have fought for a long time for that Indigenous-focused program at Pale Elementary across the road. There's been years and years of work going into the redevelopment of the Urban Native Youth Centre, just two blocks down the hill on Hastings there, and the Friendship Centre, also two blocks down the road, is a real hub for the community locally and from further abroad. So I just think it's important to state all of that, that this is a neighborhood that many people call home and that has a lot of history and vibrancy to it, and that hopefully this project can recognize and move into that rather than wiping any of it away. So that's my hope for the project, and as I said, the reasons that I will be supporting it with sort of, yeah, with some concern, I guess, but will be supporting it.
Councillor Domannato?
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to move an amendment to the report and recommendations. I've sent that to the clerks, so they can pull it up. I'll speak to you. I raised a question earlier in the context of ACFE Elementary being an Indigenous-focused school with VSB, and given that there will be the public art contribution on site, I think it'd be fantastic to see the applicant explore opportunities to incorporate some art from those students and from that school community into the public art contribution. I recognize it sounds like they're working with someone already, but I wouldn't want to miss that opportunity. It's such a great sense of pride for young people, also an enormous part of the Indigenous community as well in terms of culture. So that's what I'm proposing, is that there be an amendment to the conditions of approval and that council directs staff to work with the applicant to explore incorporating art by ACFE Elementary School students in the public art contribution.
Thanks so much. I am just going to stop your timer, councillor Domannato, while I just check that this is in order to do the nature of the quasi-judicial hearing we're in, and I'll come right back to council. I just have a text back that it's fine, so if we have a second or for this?
Second councillor Carr.
Thank you councillor Carr. Okay, we're on the debate amendment queue. Councillor Kirbyon?
Yeah, thank you. I'm really, I was really excited to hear about sort of the vision for public art for this building and the incorporation of murals, which are often temporal. And, you know, we sort of see them come through festivals or other meetings in the city, and I thought that was a unique approach to it. Sitting on the Public Art Committee as council's rep to that, I'm a bit concerned about how this amendment has constructed. I would happily support it if it spoke to sort of exploring the opportunity to reflect the Indigenous culture perhaps there, but I'm very cognizant that the Public Art Committee is always really conscious to never weigh in or specify on the selection of an artist, but they will often provide feedback when applicants and proponents come forward around sort of a site context or history or sort of some of the sort of social context of a neighborhood and a desire for that perhaps to be reflected or consideration for that to be reflected in the public art. But it's a little bit more challenging that this sort of doesn't ask to sort of reflect through that Indigenous history and sort of the, you know, the name of the school is very significant. I remember also when we attended the Natsimat library opening and how on Hastings and how significant that was to the community. But I think it goes to a very different place in public art when you're suggesting incorporating actual art by the students, opposed to exploring through the opportunity to reflect the culture, the history, or to have some inspiration come from that source. So from that perspective, it's a little bit prescriptive for me, having sat through all these different discussions and deliberations that the Public Art Committee has. So the way that it's framed is troubling to me. Thanks.
Okay, thanks so much. Councillor Frye?
Yeah, actually, I think this is quite a wonderful little amendment, and I really appreciate the intent. I think this is a, I think it's important to contextualize that this is a very large development, landing in a neighborhood with an incredibly vulnerable population, and the students at XFAE would definitely be representative of some of that sort of longstanding vulnerability in the neighborhood. And I think that this is a fantastic way to sort of bridge some of those connections. I know that there will be the sort of fears around gentrification and how a development like this of this scale and nature might displace folks in the community. And I think this is a great way to sort of mitigate some of those concerns and actually really move towards some kind of meaningful connections in the spirit of reconciliation. So I think it's a small gesture, but I really appreciate councillor Domannato bringing this forward. I think it's nice, and I totally support it.
Thanks so much. That seems to be it for speakers of this one, so we'll call a vote on this amendment.
I've come back to vote, but my panel is frozen. Could you please vote in favor for me? Thank you.
Okay, that, clerks here, there we go. We have councillor Kirbyon in opposition, and so that passes.
And just on a point of privilege, next to it?
Yes.
I said I'd come back to vote. I've been like here on the phone the whole time. I just wanted to be very clear because we are in a quasi-judicial hearing, but I was away from my computer, as noted before. Thank you.
Councillor Swanson, up to five minutes.
Yeah, I remember reading some CMHC stats last year. They said like 20 years ago, about 40% of the Grandview Woodlands residents were below the low-income cutoff, and now it's more like 20%. And that isn't because people in Grandview Woodlands have gotten richer because incomes haven't gone up. It's because Grandview Woodlands is being gentrified. That means richer people are moving in, land values and rents are going up, and poorer people get pushed out. So this project of 131 stratas directly across from a special school with Indigenous programming, kitty corner from Ano Frills on one side and kitty corner from Value Village on the other is a perfect example of a gentrifying project. What we have to watch out for is not just that the richer people will be moving into the area, that's fine, but the ripple effects of that, the higher land values, the higher rents and more displacement. Will no frills become nesters? Will Value Village become a designer-closed place? Will the low-income people who live in the area lose the services and the stores and the retail outlets that they use now? I think the answer is yes. I voted for the art. I think it's a nice idea, but it won't stop the displacement. It won't stop the gentrification, and I can't vote for this project.
Thank you. On to councillor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thank you. I will be supporting this project because we need a continuum of housing options and people do need homes. And the days of, a lot of people may not afford single-family homes are gone. And these strata units, I think, do speak to the fact that there are people that are looking to have the opportunity to own a home, and this might be their chance to do that. I think that we have delivered a fairly incredible amount of rental housing. If we look at the recent public hearings that have come forward. And I don't think that means that we have to build against every strata project that comes forward. I think that it's important to have some diversity and have a mix. I think that there are some positives to this one that I like. The setback in the 18-foot sidewalk is really important. It's particularly important for quality of the public realm and public space. I'm a huge proponent for patios, no surprise there. So I think that's important because that's what creates that sense of escape and some of that human-level engagement and interaction that people consider, watch passersby, and it just animates our street spaces and makes them more people-friendly places. So I think that that's a positive. Also love to see the covered plaza referred to Rain and Cooper earlier, but it does happen, and people increasingly do want to find ways to connect. And the pandemic has certainly underscored that. The art component to it, I think, is also a bit of a unique approach. Happy to see any creativity around delivery of public art. Again, that contributes to me to the sort of vitality of our neighborhoods and livability as well in providing that level of interest in our communities. And I also was happy to see the inclusion of the live-work spaces. Like to see us push the envelope and do more of that. Again, in the spirit of sort of offering diversity of choices and options for people. And I think that we are going to have, see that in work from home, and people are going to be looking for more creativity in their spaces and how they use them. So I think it's an opportunity to sort of diversify beyond the typical footprints that we see. You know, I would draw the analogy to sometimes when we've seen mezzanines in retail spaces. It's the same, I think, with dwellings and living spaces that people are looking for that and that diversity in space and functionality. But on balance, I'll support it. I like the inclusion of the car share, which I think is a good one. So happy to vote in favor of this project. Thank you.
Councillor Dominado?
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you to the applicant and the residents in the BIA that phoned in. I'm happy to support this proposal for a number of reasons. I was inquiring about the market earlier because obviously we've seen a conversion of proposals that come forward initially for market strata, and there's been a change to deliver rental, and there has been enormous focus on rental, which I think we all acknowledge is critically important. But to councillor Kirby Young's point, we also do need housing along that entire continuum. And homeownership is still something that individuals are striving to and for. And I noted that Mr. Savell indicated that, you know, in terms of staying the course and delivering this as a strata market development is, you know, looking to the opportunity for first-time homebuyers and recognizing that is still something that people value and are seeking in our city. And again, it just fits in that continuum of housing that we need to have, including rental, including non-market. I think there's, the other element of this, of course, is the commercial at grade, which is critically important. This is a very active street, but certainly could use some revitalization and the fact that that commercial and retail wraps around back. There's another, you know, an element of this that we don't see often. We've seen with some buildings, we've seen sort of townhomes on the lane and the alley. But I think this is something there's a lot of potential for is to have more activation of our lanes and alleys. And so I appreciate that component of this, as well as the urban room element. Again, there was, I think it was one of the last speakers that spoke about the fact that there are very narrow sidewalks in much of this area. And so it actually doesn't lend well to being able to have even a couple of chairs and tables outside of stores or cafes. And so the greater setback, which the applicant spoke to, which is more than required, will assist with that as well as the urban room space at the corner. And so I'm supportive of it, and I think that it meets a certain demand in the city and look forward to further proposals.
Councillor Hardwick?
Thanks. I think you need to reset my timer there, if you would.
You haven't spoken on this?
I have not.
Okay.
I asked questions earlier. Thank you.
Right.
So looking at the pros and cons on this, it's an attractive development, and I understand the BIA's support of it. But I agree with councillor Swanson. This is a recipe for gentrification in Grandview Woodlands without a doubt. Moreover, it is going to, as these developments broadly are, going to increase the land inflationary value. And I've been trying to draw attention to the fact that this has been an exponential increase in value, which continues to push up the cost of the land in the city and exacerbate our problems around affordability. But ultimately, we keep hearing that, you know, what we need in terms of housing. Well, we don't know what we need in terms of housing. Again, we're reliant on the Housing Vancouver Strategy and its aspirational targets for direction rather than legitimate data for evidence-based decision-making. So on balance, I cannot support it. I respect the developer. I think there's a lot of attractive aspects to this, but as long as we keep going down the same path, it's, again, it's the definition of insanity to me, repeating the same thing over and over again and expecting that we're going to create affordability is misguided. And for that reason, I cannot support.
Thanks so much. I don't see anybody else on the queue, so I'm going to call the vote on this one. Councillor De Genova?
Thanks. I was just unmuting. If I could get a vote assist in favor, please?
Great. Thanks so much. That has passed with councillors Hardwick and Swanson in opposition. Okay, council, on our last item here. Item four, which is the rezoning on 5998 Canby Street. Just wondering if there's any conflict of interests? Don't hear any, so I'll have the clerk read the application and summary.
There is an application by Parkinson Will Canada Architects to rezone 5910 to 5998 Canby Street from residential district to comprehensive development district to permit a mixed-use development, including a 15-story hotel tower containing 270 hotel units and a 29-story residential tower containing 168 strata units. The two towers sit atop a podium containing ground-floor commercial space, hotel space, and nine live-work artist studios, which are to be delivered turnkey to the city. The podium height is 23.1 meter for five stories plus partial six and seven floors. The maximum tower height is 85.7 meters with additional height for rooftop amenity space. The roof space ratio is 10.41. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list, and we see the public comments. One piece of correspondence in support and two pieces of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Thanks, council. We have one speaker to this item. We have Tiffany Rojo from the rezoning center here. We could waive the presentation unless someone wants to see it.
I would like to see it.
Okay, Tiffany Rojo, please go ahead.
Thank you. May I ask that you can hear and see the presentation?
We sure can.
Excellent. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Tiffany Rojo, and I'm the planner for this application to rezone 5910 to 5998 Canby Street under the Canby Quarter Plan. You will recall, questions were raised during referral about the height of the podium. To provide further clarity beyond what was included in the referral report, staff prepared a memo for mayor and council, which is form part of the public hearing agenda package. Staff will highlight the information later in this presentation. The site is zoned RT2 residential, shown in red on the map, and is located in the Oakridge neighborhood on the east side of Canby Street, spanning the full block between 43rd and 44th avenues. The site is across the street from Oakridge Center, southeast of the Oakridge 41st Avenue, Canaline Station, and one block west of Columbia Park. To the east, sites are zoned RS1 and RT2 to the south, consisting of single-family dwellings and various CD1 zones. To the north along Canby Street, sites are zoned C2 and consist of low-rise commercial buildings, including two rezoning applications, outlined in yellow on the map, which were approved at the January 19th public hearing. The site is comprised of five detached homes built in the 1950s with secondary rental suites. One rental unit is currently occupied while the remaining houses are vacant. This one tenancy is eligible for provisions under the tenant relocation and protection policy, and all tenancies are protected under the BC Residential Tenancy Act. This rezoning is being considered under the Canby Quarter Plan and is located within the Oakridge Municipal Town Center of the plan. The Oakridge MTC is anticipated to develop over time into a highly urban place with a variety of mixed uses, vibrant street life, and dynamic new public spaces. At the heart of the Oakridge MTC are the alphabet blocks. These blocks are all expected to deliver onsite amenities to serve growth in the MTC area. These amenities are to be negotiated as part of the rezoning process and are to be delivered turnkey to the city. The plan identifies this site as Area G in the plan, and the rezoning applications, which were approved in January of this year, are highlighted in orange on the map. This diagram illustrates the scale of development anticipated by the plan for this site. The plan provides direction for future development to have active commercial uses at grade, a commercial podium, and two towers on top. A major tower on the north end of the block can be considered up to 278 feet for residential uses and a minor tower on the south end up to 150 feet for commercial or secured market rental uses. A 60-foot commercial podium with at-grade retail and services is expected. The plan also notes that heights are site-specific and will be performance-based. Staff evaluate each application based on the site context and programming to determine if the proposal meets the general intent of the Canby Quarter Plan. The proposal before you tonight was received in December 2019. A 29-story at 281 feet with 168 strata units is proposed for the north end on the site, and a 15-story tower at 154 feet with 271 hotel units is proposed for the south end. This is the first hotel anticipated for the MTC area. Both towers sit atop a shared commercial podium with five stories plus partial six and seven floors, which are set back significantly from Canby Street. The podium consists of ground-floor retail and a community amenity of nine live-work artist studios to be delivered turnkey to the city. The pedestrian plaza is proposed at the northwest corner of the site at 43rd Avenue to provide an activated public realm and connection between Oakridge Mall and Columbia Park. Rooftop common amenity spaces are proposed for both towers in addition to shared outdoor amenity space on the podium rooftop. The proposal exceeds the 35% minimum requirement under the city's family room policy and also includes six levels of underground parking. A total floor area of 330,000 square feet with an FSR of 10.41 are proposed. Onsite amenities to be delivered in the Oakridge MTC area through the Canby Quarter Plan includes a minimum of five turnkey artist studios. The community amenity offered in this application almost doubles the direction in the plan by proposing nine affordable live-work artist studios to be delivered turnkey to the city. Through negotiations with staff, the applicant is also offering seven of the nine artist studios as double-height units, which will provide for more variety of artist programming. The remaining two studios will be dedicated accessible units. These artist studios will form part of the city's Artist Studio Award Program, which provides affordable artist space by supporting low-income Vancouver-based professional artists. This is an important cultural amenity that will both provide social housing and artist studios as the program provides spaces at below-market rates. If approved, this project would triple the live-work studios currently available in the city's Artist Studio Award Program. The live-work artist studios are located in a separate airspace parcel in the podium at the base of the residential tower, as outlined in yellow. This location prioritizes desirable north light for the artist studios. The provision of nine artist studios, seven of which are required to be double-height, displaced floor area intended by the applicant for hotel use. The applicant indicated that the displaced floor area was critical to maintain the viability of the hotel use. Noting that the hotel tower is at its maximum height, the displaced floor area was relocated into two additional partial stories on the podium, which was deemed to have lesser impact. The additional stories are outlined in red. The height to the five-story podium is 57.4 feet, and the height to the two additional partial stories is 75.8 feet. Staff considered the additional partial stories on the podium relative to the urban design performance objectives within the Canby Quarter Plan. The partial stories are set back 60 feet from the west face of the podium at Canby Street. This setback ensures that the partial stories are not visible from Canby and will not affect the quality of public realm envisioned along Canby Street. The height of the five-story portion of the podium is consistent with the expectations of the plan for a 60-foot street wall height along Canby. As noted, the two partial stories, shown in red, are located on the east side of the podium facing the lane. Across the lane, the plan envisions 18-story mixed-use buildings along 43rd Avenue and six-story buildings along 44th Avenue. As such, the partial stories will transition to future higher buildings across the lane and have no significant shadow impact onto these properties or the public realm. Staff support the additional height to the podium as it allows for the proposed hotel and artist studio programming and has minimal impact on neighboring properties or the public realm while maintaining the overall intent of the surrounding built-form guidelines of the Canby Quarter Plan. A virtual open house was held from June 8th to 28th of 2020 on the Shape Your City platform. Public input was received throughout the application process through online questions, comment forums, email, and by phone. Throughout the application process, staff received a total of 29 comments or questions on the project with one comment and phone call in opposition to the partial six and seven floors. The application submission included the five-story podium plus partial six and seven floors. The project's website includes materials available for public viewing, such as floor plans, project renderings, photos of the project model, and a digital presentation of the proposed building. Overall feedback included support for the proposed height, density, and building design, support for the affordable live-work spaces for artists, the addition of more housing stock, the number of parking spaces proposed, and support for the virtual open house process. Concerns included comments regarding the height, density, and building design of the proposal, traffic congestion, and lack of parking. This application generates a variety of public benefits. This includes the in-kind community amenity contribution in the form of nine live-work artist studios to be delivered turnkey to the city for the Artist Studio Award Program. The value of the artist studios is $6.12 million. In addition to the provision of artist studio space, the applicant has also offered a cash CAC of $13.68 million, which will be allocated to further support delivery of the Canby Quarter Public Benefit Strategy. The applicant will also be required to pay DCLs and provide a public art contribution, bringing the total value bringing the total value of the public benefits offered for this project to just over twenty-eight million dollars. As part of the Restart Smart Vancouver Initiative in response to COVID-nineteen, if approved, this project would generate over seven-hundred-and-fifty off-site and onsite construction jobs, contributing to Vancouver's post-COVID economic recovery. This is the first hotel anticipated for the area and will support further objectives of the Municipal Town Center. Oak Ridge is an appropriate location to expand the city's hotel supply, given the area designation a, as a regional town center, rapid transit connection to Richmond, YVR, and downtown, and the proximity to B.C. Women's and Children's Hospitals. The addition of a hotel to the area will help to support local retail, restaurant, and service businesses and diversify employment in the neighborhood. In conclusion, this proposal meets the intent of the Camby Corridor Plan and the proposed height, density, form, and land uses are appropriate for this location. This proposal is in accordance with the plan as it delivers market residential units, job-generating commercial space in the form of a hotel, and a public benefits package valued at just over twenty-eight million dollars, which includes affordable live-work artist studios delivered turnkey to the city. Staff recommend the application be approved, subject to conditions outlined in Appendix B. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Staff and applicant team are available for any questions you may have.
Thanks so much. Is the applicant team here to speak to the application?
It's Bruno Wall, I'm here.
Great, thanks. Is there anything you'd like to say or just answer questions?
Um, just, just briefly, we, we, you know, we're, we're hotel operators and developers in Vancouver, um, and we think this is an ideal spot to add to Vancouver's hotel inventory despite the obvious current downturn that we're experiencing. Long-term, you know, Vancouver needs more hotel spaces, and this property located midtown could ideally serve both businesses in the neighborhood, connections to EBC, the hospital, et cetera. So we think it's part of an emerging, uh, community in the Oak Ridge area, and we're delighted to be a part of it.
Thanks so much. Um, Councilor Kirby Young, up to five minutes for questions.
Yeah, thanks so much. Uh, my question's going to be directed to the applicant, um, at this stage, and it, it's really with regards to the hotel. And just wondering if you have a comment with respect to, this is the first new hotel that this council has considered. We had one replacement, um, project. I wonder if you can comment on sort of the challenges of building hotel based on the current zoning policy and how you're able to do it in this particular location for this project?
Well, there's a couple of challenges to building hotels, of course. You know, one of them is just how long it takes to ramp the hotel up to get to a, a proper level of occupancy to make it economically viable. What we like about this location is the access to transit and the access to all the amenities that are going to come out of the, uh, development of the Oak Ridge Town Center. The, um, you know, when we were first considering it, you know, my, my thought was, well, we're too far from downtown. And my, um, Director of Marketing said, you know, if you get on the Canada Line, it takes you less time to walk to get downtown to the Trading Convention Center than it does if you walk from, uh, our current World Centre, right, that garden, Garden Nelson. So that was a bit of an eye-opener for me. You know, one of the difficulties that we have with, uh, looking at hotels of, uh, in a typical downtown scenario is that there's so much back-of-the-house space that's required that all counts as part of your FSR. Uh, fortunately, in the Camby Corridor Plan, there is no cap on the overall FSR. So this gives us the opportunity to just, uh, to develop a project that's just within the confines of height and building floor plate size. So that areas that we've got to create for back-of-house, laundry, commercial kitchens, staff rooms, et cetera, uh, can be placed below grade, and we don't necessarily get penalized for it. So this is one of the benefits of actually building a hotel in this particular location.
And are you envisioning that this is a service hotel? Would it have, um, meeting, conference, and banquet space? Or would it be more focused on, on rooms only?
It will be kind of a, a mid-range between those two. We, we're not proposing a large ballroom. We don't think this is an es, it's required in this location, but we have extensive boardrooms, meeting rooms, breakout spaces. So it's more designated for smaller meetings, smaller groups. It's not, would not be considered a conventional hotel, other than to support, um, you know, a larger convention that might be downtown.
Okay.
We, we anticipate about a hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred full-time jobs uh, that will be created by this property once this has been running.
Okay, uh, and at this point, I assume you're not going to say how you're flagging it, although, as you said, you are the current hotel operator, an owner, right?
Yeah, you know, it's, the hotel business is evolving so much. You know, whether to flag it or not is really a question that's up in the air right now. We know enough about the business that we can incorporate, uh, design parameters that would work for a variety of flags. That's where we need to go. Um, but at this point, we're going to be flexible in that regard.
Okay, um, but are you hitting sort of a mid, a, a mid-market type of offering or?
Yeah, I would say it would be mid-market. It's not going to be super high-end, so definitely mid-market.
Okay, um, and then, thank you for that. Switching gears, in terms of the residential component, um, was there any consideration, um, given sort of the market has changed and sort of the need for rental to do a mixed tenure, um, as opposed to a hundred percent strata for the residential component?
Um, we looked at that, and we've developed a couple of buildings recently in the last five years, uh, more in the downtown core where they are strata titled, but we rented them all out, retained ownership. So that certainly is one option for here. So we like that flexibility of being able to go either way. Um, given the, the challenges that you alluded to with regard to the hotel, another option is to monetize the strata component in order to bring out the cost of the hotel, bring out the capital cost of the hotel. So that's another model we're looking at. But, you know, we're, we're long-term investors, investors and landlords in Vancouver, been here for sixty years. So we're looking at it both ways.
Okay, so there could be rental, but you're not, you're not, um, you're not sort of specifying at this stage that?
That's right. It will not be dedicated rental, um, as, as it's defined.
Okay, um, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Councilor Frye, up to five?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, I guess this is questions for both the, the staff and the applicant. And it's regarding the initial referral report and, uh, how this project was presented as sitting atop of five-story podium, two towers atop of five-story podium, and how the subsequent design that we see has, has a five-story on the street side, but it, it steps up to seven or eight-story on the alley side. And, and I, and I know that there was some concerns expressed prior to the referral around the impacts on the adjacent neighborhood and, and why couldn't that eight-story shift to the street side and have the five-story on the alley side? Or why this had even moved from, from a, a five-story podium to, um, what we see in this proposal?
Is that for me or for staff?
Well, it's for both of you, but, uh.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll start. Um, Tiffany alluded to the fact that, you know, we're adding additional live-work studios space, uh, so we're trying to make some of that up. I, in, in our minds, being operators of hotels for over twenty-five years, you know, around three-hundred rooms or keys, as we refer to, is kind of an ideal, and we're, we struggle to get to that number. We're at two-hundred-and-seventy now. So we were looking for an opportunity to add some additional guest rooms, and, um, in conjunction with staff, we determined that this was a, a logical and hopefully a viable place to put them. It adds about ten to fifteen guest rooms to our overall, uh, room count. It, it, it may not sound material, but getting closer and closer to that three-hundred room count is, is pretty critical for us in terms of making it economically viable. And we're hoping that locating it where, that area where it is has the least impact. It is seven stories, not eight, um, you know, in the neighborhood. As Tiffany mentioned, it's not visible from Camby, and it corresponds quite nicely, and we think, um, to, to the potential redevelopment to the east of us.
So, okay, so talking about the potential redevelopment to the east, is that, uh, I'm, I thought it was single-family home kind of residential style?
Well, it is now, but in the Camby Corridor Plan, it's designated to be up soon.
Okay, okay. Stephanie, comments on the, um, so that, this was at the advice of staff, because I know that there was some consternation around the public open houses, where, where expecting a five-story podium. And obviously, this is a, a change from that.
Hi, Counselor. This is, uh, Tiffany Rojo, rezoning center. Happy to address that. I should reiterate that through the entire application process, this application did have a five-story podium with partial six and seven stories, and that's been true since submission and has been, uh, you know, renderings have been on the website and floor plans, and all of that has been available for public view, viewing on the Shape Your City website. The referral report did mention that it was a five-story podium with partial six and seven stories as well. That being said, to provide further clarity for public hearing, staff did, um, advertise, uh, perhaps more clearly in the postcards and the newspaper ads that it was very clearly a five-story podium with partial six and seven stories. But these partial stories were not added throughout the application process. They were there at application submission. So I hope that, I hope that clarifies things.
That does, yeah. Certainly, we heard the, the concerns from the community. Uh, and I, I guess to Peter Wall's earlier points, I, I can certainly appreciate that even though ten to fifteen rooms doesn't seem like much, uh, on, on the scale of operating a hotel, I'm sure it does make a difference. So this was considered like, uh, a supportive trade-off from staff working on this to get it here?
That's right. Uh, so the plan does note that, you know, heights are site-specific and will be performance-based, and as such, staff do evaluate each application based on the site context and programming to determine if the proposal meets the general intent of the plan. So, um, you know, staff did support the additional height of these partial stories as it allowed for the proposed hotel and artist studio programming, and it had very minimal impact on neighboring properties or, or the public realm. And staff felt that it meant, met the intent of the Camby Corridor Plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we have, uh, Counselor Swanson next.
Yeah, just one question. What is the current FSR on that site? Is it point six or seven?
Staff?
Hi there, uh, Tiffany Rojo, rezoning center. It's, as it's zoned RT-two, the, the current zoning RT-two, the maximum density that would be allowed on the site is zero-point-seven-five, Counselor Swanson.
Okay, thank you. That's good.
Thanks so much. Uh, that's it for, uh, questions. So we do have, uh, one, uh, one member of the public that has signed up to speak.
Yeah, I'm trying to get into my old VIVO next login. It keeps showing me to the info one.
Hi, Counselor Weep, you're, uh, yeah, if you could mute that, that would be great. Thanks. Uh, we have, uh, Tracy Moore, Moyer.
Good evening.
Hi there. You have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Can I just check if my written submission is up on the screen for you all to see?
Sure. Yes, it is.
Thank you. So, good evening, Council, Tracy Moyer, Chair of Oak Ridge Land Area Residence. Um, next slide, please, and thank you for flipping throughout my presentation, starting with the introduction. We find a complete disrespect regarding the back of this proposal and particularly the podium height. It's a little bit offensive. Actually, it's very offensive. I also want to go through this evening the Camby Corridor Plan's podium rules and tower guidelines. Also talk briefly about the intention of this proposal, public plaza, to work together with matching the plaza across forty-third Avenue. A traffic study, groundwater contamination. The report is a bad landlord and neighbor, and finish up with the summary. So, starting with podium rules, according to the Camby Corridor Plan, I'm just going to read the highlighted parts. Five-three-one, the podium.
Uh, I guess you want the next slide? If you could just let us know what you want us to change the slides.
I forgot, yes.
That's no problem. That's a lot to manage.
We're now on podium rules, Camby Corridor Plan, five-three-one. The podium build, building height should be, um, between fifty and sixty feet in height, jumping down to five-three-two. An additional partial story, and let me emphasize, that's one additional partial story, may be considered if it's to accommodate indoor amenity space. Of course, I'm going to suggest to you that revenue generating hotel rooms are not indoor amenity space. And third one, five-three. The additional story must be significant, or step back significantly from all bed, building edges. Uh, staff did report that the additional podium heights are step-back significant from Camby Street, but there is no step-back on the rear of this property, and it is extremely offensive to people that are living behind the property now, and I would imagine future residents would also appreciate some respect in the rear of the property. Next slide, please. The proposed podium is not allowable. A five-story podium with a height of fifty-seven-four, um, plus the extra two stories brings it to a height of fifty-seven, fifty, sorry, seventy-five-point-eight. However, Counselor Frye, I really appreciate the fact that you did notice that there's actually a, depending how you split your, your sections of this building, there is one opportunity for eight stories because of the mezzanine area is used for some internal space. So, yes, at some point, this building's actually eight stories tall. Kudos to principal, to, uh, Counselor Frye. Next point, while only one additional partial story may be considered, two stories are being proposed here. While an additional podium height must be indoor amenity space, not ten additional hotel rooms as being proposed here. And Ola's estimate of the annual room revenue for those ten extra hotel rooms is half a million dollars a year. And then finally, while the additional story should be stepped back significantly from the rear edge, there is no step-back, maximizing the appearance from ground level for all the poor people living behind current and future, and of course, anyone that's going to be in the, in the lane, in the neighborhood. Next slide, please. It's tower guidance according to the Camby Corridor Plan. Two points here. Five-three-three, residual tower elements should be stepped back six to twelve feet from the podium edge. And if it's in the rear, it's even more, um, protective. It's saying that above forty-feet, feet, the building should be stepped back an additional twelve, twelve feet from the lane. So if you look at the little diagram directly from the Camby Corridor Plan, the, uh, the lane is on the left, and you'll see two pronounced step-backs on the lane. The proposed tower, this is the north elevation.
You just have a minute left? Just to let you know.
Oh, okay. So basically, proposed tower, uh, is straight, um, vertical on the lane. Comparing it to two other projects recently, well, uh, next slide, which is fifty-seven-hundred block, there is a step-back that was approved in January. Uh, a little one and a large one. Moving on to slide fifty-eight-hundred, which is right next door, one block north, there is a, um, um, a significant step-back well below sixty feet. You can see that on the right side of the diagram that it submitted.
Staff, can you move that along? Just going to ask staff to move those slides along, because I don't think they're, we're on fifty-seven-hundred. That's okay. Fifty-seven-hundred block Camby, we're on?
Yes, I'll go back to that. Fifty-seven-hundred block. So that you approved that, Council, in January of twenty-twelve. On the left-hand side is the lane side. That is a very small step-back, and then a very large one, um, on the lane below sixty feet.
We're.
Coming before you soon. Next slide. Coming, um, next slide, fifty-eight-hundred block. There, this is proposed. You haven't decided on this yet. But there is one significant step-back on the lane. That's on the right side of this building, below the sixty-foot mark. Next slide, please. There are two public plazas.
So we're, um, just letting you know that we're at five minutes, thirty-seven seconds, so we're well over. Um, and so I'm going to, um, move on to counselors. Sorry?
Uh, may I just sum it up?
Well, we're, we're almost a minute over here, so perhaps you can sum up in your answers to the counselors. You do have two questions. Uh, Counselor Hardwick, go ahead. Up to five minutes.
Thank you very much for speaking, uh, with us today. You have been involved with the Camby Corridor planning process, uh, for some time, correct?
Correct, Counselor.
And, uh, as you've observed, this is non-conforming to the plan. I'm presuming you've gone through the multiple phases of this plan. Is that accurate?
Yes.
So what can we do? I mean, it, it's, it's pretty clear to me from what you're describing and, and the presentation that we've received that, um, it is not consistent wi, with the plan, um, but here we are. What are your suggestions?
Well, it's difficult to roll back time, um, but we have to make corrections when there are problematic proposals before you. This is not just the residents who are watching. This is also the development industry. Ola received a tip from another architect currently working in the Camby Corridor to say that this proposal is overheight. So, you know, the eyes are on this development, very, very, very interesting. We actually want to say that public realm does matter on all sides of the proposal. It's not just the front side that matters. Public realm is on all four sides. This proposal is unallowable. You can't put hotel rooms if you're even going to grant an additional level of podium. You absolutely cannot grant two levels of podium. It's arrogant, it's unres, unallowable, it's disrespectful. And absolutely, this has to go back to staff to work with the proposal. And absolutely, this has to go back to staff to work with the proponent to bring it in line with the Canby Corridor Plan. And finally, I mean, we've, we have a terrible neighbor in this proponent. We need city bylaws to be actually followed. I have a big, long list of all the bylaws they don't, they, they break on a regular basis. There's to be a plaza on the north side that's supposed to work with the plaza, um, that matches on the other side of Forty Third Street, on, uh, the other side of the avenue. And they're being really respectful. Their public plaza space doesn't have a ceiling on it. This proposal, they have part of the building over top, creating a ceiling on part of the plaza. That's not disrespect, that's disrespectful. Right? Why is this proponent being given all these breaks that other developers don't get? It's really, really unfair and we're trying to draw attention to that. So in answer to your question, Counselor, it really is a matter of trying to even the table so that different developers get treated the same way. They all have to follow the same Canby Corridor Plan. And then it's not up to, up to Resident Associations to be able to figure out that, wait a minute, this isn't meeting the plan. This is, this is not acceptable.
Counselor Hardwick, you're on mute, I think.
Sorry about that. You know, we, we continue to see deviation, uh, from plans, uh, frequently in, with this council. Ultimately, what message does this send to the OLR folks and, and the people that you're talking to?
This is one of the more egregious, this is one of the more egregious, um, violations in our opinion. We understand from times past that a traffic study needs to be provided, posted on the city webpage, um, so the public has an opportunity to review and comment on the staffing or the, the, the traffic flow. That's, we understood previously was a requirement of the rezoning stage. We can't find the traffic study. You know, there's ground, water contamination below this property and there's going to be a huge underground parking lot. The public in the neighbor, in the area wants to know what kind of assurance is going to be for any kind of possible, um, contamination migration during excavation and construction. You know, we, we read in the policy reports that, oh, there'll be assurances by a couple of different departments, um, uh, internal city documents, departments. The public needs to know these things. How do we get information in a timely way? We want that communicated.
Well, the key information may be. Yeah. At the end of the day, no, there's thirteen million, six hundred and eighty, uh, thousand dollars cash plus six million, one hundred and twenty thousand CAC in kind for nine work, artist work, live work units. So that may, uh, answer the question. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Kirby Young, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thanks. I'll try to be quick. Thanks for speaking, Ms. Moore. I just wanted to clarify because it has been a bit confusing, um, with clarification around, um, podium and, and the stories. If you are suggesting specifically that it should not be as high, or you're suggesting more, you're more, more concerned that it's not conforming? Or you're more concerned that it doesn't have a step back for transition to the neighborhood?
Oh, our understanding of the plan is that absolutely, there's no way a podium can be two stories, uh, additional stories on the podium. As well, if one, if one is considered by staff and council, it cannot be hotel space. It can't be revenue generating space. All it can be is indoor amenity space. So two, two big problems. And those, we don't think there's any wiggle room on those two. When it comes to the massing, uh, we don't believe that the guidance in the Canby Corridor Plan is as firm. What we've seen with the previous rezoning that came before you, um, two blocks north, Cambion Forty First, that there was, like I said, a small and a, and a large step back to the, to the rear of the building. One project not yet before you, one block north, has a significant step back. So the Canby Corridor is not as firm on this particular item, but absolutely, if a developer before and a developer after, all within like two blocks of each other, why isn't there some consistency there? Right? Step backs are, are desirable by the neighborhood's perspective and I would suggest should be by the cities as well. We're being disappointed here.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, didn't want to, um, repeat, I just want to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for questions. Thanks so much for calling in this evening. And, um, I'm going to now make the first call for additional speakers. The number and codes are on Twitter and the live stream. Just gonna ask staff if there's anybody else on the line.
It's the clerk here, Mayor Stewart, and no.
Okay, uh, one eight hundred, sorry, one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, code four two three three nine hashtag to get on the list. That's the second call. Anybody else, clerks?
No, no one on the line, Mayor Stewart.
Okay, thanks. Last call, uh, the numbers on the live stream, it's been tweeted out. So we've got our third call, we're nine fifteen, council. Let's come back at nine twenty.
Mayor Stewart? Yes, we do have another caller.
Okay. Great. Caller, you have up to five minutes. Just let us know your name and if you, if you live in Vancouver.
Do you hear me now?
Yes, we do.
Oh, okay, yeah. It's Nathan Davidovich calling. I spoke to council in January about the other rezoning. And this one is basically the same thing, you know, the Canby Corridor Plan was, you know, done by the previous council, of course. And there's so many holes in the plan and, and, uh, the Langar Residents Association pointed out some of the holes and problems and, and I support them. But, uh, you know, uh, it's up to council if they want to, uh, make some changes to the plan because it just doesn't make any sense that you can't build a hotel beside the children hospital on Thirty Third Avenue. You know, to serve the hotel, the hospital, but you can build one here, you know? Should build it right beside the hospital. But, um, the, the main thing is, is the access. This is again, another building on the east side of Canby Street and cannot access the Skytrain station unless you cross, uh, Forty First and, and Canby. And, um, as I told you last time, uh, you know, you have to ask the transit and the developers to find, uh, uh, to fund, uh, a, a new entrance. There is no cost whatsoever to the city and, uh, so why not just ask to see if you can get, uh, uh, another entrance from the east side, uh, of, of Canby Street to serve all these new developments that's going to, that are being built on the east side of Canby. I bet you right nowadays, at least five thousand people a day that cross Forty First and Canby. And with all these new developments and people coming in, uh, it's, it's going to be, uh, probably up to ten or even more thousand people per day. And, uh, it's very hard when you cross that level crossing, but having an underground connection to the station would, uh, would help the, the whole area and all the, the new buildings in the area. I don't know. I mean, the staff, as, as usual, don't talk about the Canby bus. They just talk about the Forty First bus, you know, and the Canby bus, one of the worst buses in the city. And nobody cares about it and nobody wants to, to, to improve it, even though it's faster to take the Canby bus from Oakridge to City Hall than to take the Canada Line. But, you know, it has to be improved and has to be electrified. The, the poles are already there, it's just a matter of putting the trolley wires back on Canby Street. And, uh, you know, again, you know, staff don't want to report about that. It's another, it's something else that another council has done. And, uh, even the former mayor, he apologized to the public about the, the, the Canada Line, uh, faults and, and, uh, you know, lack of, of proper stations and proper capacity and so forth. But of course, the former mayor was not involved in the construction of the Canada Line. It was the mayor before him that made the mistakes of approving, uh, the Canada Line. And, and now we, we have the results of that. It's just, uh, uh, it's just a mess that, uh, will cost, uh, as much to fix as the original cost of the whole Canada Line. You know, and, uh, so I don't know what, uh, what could be done, but, uh, you know, it's, uh, this particular council has a chance to make some corrections to the mistakes of previous councils. And, uh, and request some answers and so forth. There's no cost whatsoever to the city. It's, uh, but, um, you know, uh, somebody has to make these requests. Otherwise, uh, we'll be, you know, waiting forever to get any improvements, uh, done. And the capacity will just not be there to, to, to serve all the people that, uh, are going to be living around this area. So thank you for your, uh, uh, hearing me about it.
Thank you so much. I don't have any questions for you, so thanks so much. And I'll go to the clerks. Is there anybody else on the line?
No further speakers.
Okay, counsel, I'm going to close the speaker's list and also close the, uh, the receipt of public comments and ask the applicant if you have any closing comments.
Just a couple, uh, mayor and council, um, you know, we're, we're committed to creating, you know, new hotel rooms that service the economy to create new jobs. And, um, you know, I understand some of the issues around that there's extra couple of floors. It's not a lot of area. I hope you can support it and we look forward to moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, have any closing comments?
No further comments, Mayor Stewart.
Thank you. Any questions from counselors to staff? So can somebody move the motion, please?
No move, Counselor Kirby Young.
Thank you.
Second, Counselor Diefenbach.
Okay, thanks. Uh, I've got Counselor Kirby Young on the list here for, uh, is that a holdover?
No, that's you.
Okay, please go ahead. Up to, uh, five minutes for debate.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. There's a couple of things that, uh, I appreciate the comments, first of all, from, um, the Resident Association and that consideration. I'm going to offer a couple of points and perspective, I think, as well. There's a couple of things I really like about this project. One is the hotel. Um, and I don't think it can be underscored. So if you think back to pre-pandemic times, it was well documented and quantified in the economic impact that Vancouver was losing due to having an insufficiency of hotel rooms part of that. And yes, we have a long runway in terms of recovery in our tourism sector ahead of us. Um, and we're a couple of years out from building a hotel. Um, and we've got several years until tourism would rebound to the same levels. They said unless we change our pattern to domestic tourism, it could take five years to rebound. However, the other thing that's happening in the market and that we're seeing has been this increased interest by government in acquiring hotel properties for social housing. And that is taking additional rooms out of the market. So we've lost a number of them because sites have been redeveloped for residential, uh, just in terms of looking at the economics of sites. It's very difficult to build a hotel that is economically viable. And now we're losing more rooms, which I think is going to really impact us when the tourism industry rebounds. It is challenging in the economics to build a hotel and, you know, as many know, my background's working the industry and there is sort of a, a sort of identified sweet spot that if you don't, if you underbuild your rooms and/or your meeting space, and that's why I was asking about sort of whether this was full service and to what degree. It can be really challenging, um, to keep that hotel in the black, particularly with the high of servicing and staff. And it was referenced, this would be a hundred and fifty to two hundred jobs. But having worked for a hotel company with forty properties, one was downtown, it ran at two hundred and twenty rooms and it fetched a great rate. It had high occupancy, the average used to be occupancy used to be about eighty-two percent of city Vancouver part of the pandemic. And it was tough to make the numbers work on that hotel. Just simply there were, there were months where you were just trying to cover costs on it. And that was, you know, a new build property that opened just in time for the Olympics. And it was lovely. But I can tell you that they're becoming expensive to run. So I'm perhaps keenly tuned into the economics of hotel, but I also think that we need to see diversification of hotel in Vancouver. And we also need to see it outside of the downtown core and the current interim hotel rezoning policy that was put in place to try to facilitate some of that. Actually, only enabled that sort of within the downtown area. actually only enable that within the downtown area, but not outside of it. So that's also unique that we're providing sort of that ability here. So I look at that from sort of an economic, an economic generation perspective. The other thing that I like specifically about this is the live work artist studios. And we're seeing artists that are being increasingly pushed out, whether it's through lack of space for redevelopment or their spaces with the taxation. And, you know, I had a discussion today on the property tax report with highest and best use, getting a lot of arts cultural nonprofit groups. So having nine turnkey artist studios, seven of them with the double height space and two of them being accessible, I think is a real plus. And I also like the idea of seeing amenities and the ability to have artists located in areas across our city and not just traditionally where they've had to basically find sort of the rundown cheap space. That's where they can hunker down until something gets redeveloped. But being able to provide some dedicated space that's going to be there with some degree of stability and certainty. So that's a plus for me, as is the public plaza piece. Because it's, it's a bit dodgy now. If you were trying to cross over on the east side of Canby across to Oakridge. And, you know, it spoke about having better transitions across the way. It's a little dodgy. It's not particularly safe for pedestrians to get across there, unless you head all the way down to 41st or make a run for it. And so I think that's particularly important to ensure that there's, you know, safe transitions for people so that they can move around the neighborhood. So there are a number of considerations here. It would be interesting to have seen sort of more of a mix of rental and strata tenure on there. But I think the hotel piece is very similar to the conversations that we often have around council about the difficulty of building rental versus strata. And hotel is becoming less so. And if you think of all the hotels that have been built in Vancouver in the past number of years, very rarely do you see a dedicated standalone hotel. They've all been stratified and diversified. So think of the Shangri-La, the Hotel Georgia and others. And they do, and that's been done simply because the ability to build a standalone hotel is very difficult economically. So, you know, sort of coming from it, from that perspective, I understand the proposal and how it's constructed. I also think it will be unique to sort of add that, that offering again, as I said, outside of the downtown core and spread the tourism benefits to different neighborhoods. So for that reason, I will support the project. Thank you.
Councillor Dominado.
Hi, mayor. I have a point of information through you to staff because I missed the opportunity there. You went so quickly around questions. And I just want to ask with respect to the resident who spoke and representing the residents association around the step backs at the lane in a building that we previously, the rezoning we previously approved, as well as other ones that are coming to us. If staff could speak to that and, and in terms of the context of the policy.
Staff?
Councillor, could you please repeat the question?
Yes, sorry. The resident who came, called in, spoke to the Canby corridor plan and the step backs that are required and on the lane and not seeing that in this proposal. And I'm just curious if you could comment on that in terms of the policy framework.
Good evening, man, council. This is Ryan Ten Development Planner. The plan requires a setback of eight feet from the property line, the reappropriate line to the podium. In this proposal, they, the applicant proposed approximately 14 feet to the podium and 20 feet to the sixth and seventh partial story, which meets the expectation of the plan, which require 20 feet for any portion of the building beyond 40 feet height.
Okay, what about the upper levels? And I know we don't have the slides from the residents anymore to, to look at.
Yeah, it's 20 feet.
You would have seen that presentation.
It's 20 feet from the, the property line to the upper level podium.
So you're saying is that it does conform to the Canby corridor plan and existing policy?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And the resident also queried the height. Speak to that and address that again? She suggested it was over height.
Hi there, this is Tiffany Roger on the rezoning center. Just to clarify, is it the height to the top of the five-story podium? And then to the top of the sixth and seventh partial story that you're looking for clarity on?
Both, in, in the context of the residents' questions. But she said it was over height.
Yes, certainly. So the height to the top of the, the five-story portion of the podium has a height of 57.4 feet. And what's allowed in the plan is 60 feet.
Point of privilege, sorry, I'm going to get you to pause there. We have some background noise, mayor. If whoever's not on mute, could they mute?
Please continue, staff. Please continue, staff.
Okay, I'll, it's Tiffany here. I'll continue now, it sounds quiet. So the five-story portion of the podium has a height of 57.4 feet, which is below the maximum of 60 feet, which is identified in the plan. And the remaining height of the podium, being the partial sixth and seventh floors, is a height of 75.8 feet.
Thank you.
Councillor Swanson.
Are we still on questions to staff?
We are not. We have had the motion moved and seconded, and now we're in debate.
Okay, well, a few months ago, I made a motion that passed that basically asked staff to give us a report on how to increase affordability in the Canby corridor. We haven't got that report yet. And meanwhile, we keep passing all of these projects that are going to basically make the Canby corridor into an area for the elite. And this one with a whole bunch of strata is going to do that. So I just don't want to be part of that. That's it for me.
Thank you, councillor Kerr.
Thanks, mayor. And like councillor Dominado, you kind of went through the questions quickly. So if I could possibly ask through you points of information to staff, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Great, okay, thank you. Staff, in follow-up to councillor Dominado's questioning, you noted that the podium levels of six and seven are up to 75.8 feet. But my quest, so is number one, that a problem in terms of the guidelines? And not matching the guidelines around the height that you said was allowed to be 60 feet? That's my first question. And my second question is, the speaker, Tracy Moyer, noted that, that an additional story on the podium is not allowable unless it is for indoor amenity space, not for hotel rooms. So I'd like your comment on that, please.
Staff?
Hi there, Tiffany Roger on the rezoning center again. For the first question, the, the item that Tracy had mentioned with regards to the, the amenity space was actually, those aren't for on top of a podium. They are allowed on top of the towers. So I hope that provides some clarity. And with regards to the 60 feet, yes. So the partial six and seventh stories do exceed the guidance provided in the plan for a 60-foot podium. However, as mentioned, staff do evaluate each application based on the site context and programming and found that this did meet the intent of the Canby corridor plan, as it also did not, it had minimal impact on neighboring properties. So staff do take a number of factors into reviewing that.
Okay, thank you. Just a follow-up, just to make sure I'm clear. You said the additional stories that, that were mentioned by Tracy Moyer that could only be allowed if they were for indoor amenity space. Are you saying that that has nothing to do with the podium? But rather just the overall height and additional stories in the overall building?
Yeah, so the amenity space that Tracy was referring to is just for on the top of the towers. It does not, the plan does not speak to amenity space on top of the podium. So they're kind of, we're speaking about two different things. One is the amenity space on top of the towers. And the other is the, the partial six and seventh stories as part of the podium.
Okay, appreciate that clarification. Yeah, it does, thank you. Yeah, that's it for me, mayor, thank you. And you may be muted.
Thank you, councillor Hardwick.
Thanks. Well, I, I get the clear boosterism of getting, putting a hotel down in this part of Camp, the Canby corridor opposite Oakridge. I certainly understand the business rationale for it. But again, this plan, this Canby corridor plan, which was a product of the former council, which has been, again, I'm convinced, foundationally flawed in its consideration. We just keep moving ahead as if there's nothing wrong with it. And there is. As, as Tracy pointed out, this doesn't meet the plan. And it, it's kind of awkward when we get into the, the, you know, the nitty gritty of it on the, the virtual council floor. But the bottom line is that, what was the word? We evaluate the intent of the plan and move ahead accordingly, which I'm sure is a bitter pill for the Oakridge Langara residents and the folks that have spent a lot of time trying to contribute to a plan that would impact their futures more than anybody else in the city. So flawed policy based on former council doesn't meet the plan, offensive to the Oakridge Langara Residents Association. Well, that, and overall, the purpose behind it is boosterism. So I'm unable to support.
Thank you. Perhaps councillor Weaver, if you could take the floor. I just have a few comments to make on, on this project. Go ahead, mayor. Thank you very much. Yay, a new hotel. The walls are known for building good hotels that people like to stay in. And this will be another one. So I wanted to thank the proponent for the creativity on this project. And, and I'll be supporting it. I think we have proved, approved a lot of rental. We've approved lots of strata, but I do think we need more hotels. If we hear anything from the hospitality sector, the only way we're going to encourage more tourists is to have places for them to stay. And so this is, this is great and a good use of the, of the transit in the area. So I will be supporting this. And if I can take it back, councillor Weaver, I'll throw it over to you.
Perfect. I will also be supportive. I think hotel is critical for this area. I also like the natural assets being included. I think the green corridor along Canby is a great use of a greenway space. And I think that the aesthetically, the building is going to meet a lot of needs in the area. So I am supportive.
Thanks so much. That's it for speakers, so I will call the vote.
Point of privilege, Chris Stewart?
Yes, councillor Dejanova?
If I could get a vote assist in favor, please.
Thank you so much. That's been recorded. So council, I, this has passed with councillor Swanson and councillor Hardwick in opposition. Thanks very much, council. That's it for our public hearing schedule tonight. So I have a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn?
Thank you. Seconder?
Second, Weaver.
Thank you. All in favor, yay? Opposed, nay? Great, okay, thanks. We have adjourned and we're right back at it tomorrow morning, council and the standing committee, starting at 9:30. And we do have another public hearing Thursday evening. And that one will probably go for a couple of days, just so you know. Okay, thanks so much, everybody. We'll see you tomorrow.
Thanks, all.